Five oh two. Okay, so for this policy meeting, we are going back to some of the J policies that have changed since we last reviewed them. There were some minor changes made by MASC. So this meeting is just to go through those changes, see what they are and which ones we're going to decide to adopt. So we're going to start with the first one, JL Student Affairs. And for this one, what I noticed, most of the language was, I think there were some updates on the laws and most of the language was changed around the words parent guardian. And for the district version, there was more robust language. On safety on the playground and playing field fire drills. I think that's what we incorporated at our last review, some of that language. So my recommendation, if there aren't any other observations, is to, if we're looking at the change version, I would say adopt those changes, but keep the parent guardian language.
So just a little bit on the changed version. So this is an automated tool that we're playing with and I can tell already it's tricky. Sometimes you compare the wrong one in the wrong order. So you've got red marked in the reverse way. You would want to look at it.
Oh.
Do you know what I'm saying?
These are drops, not ads.
Yes, right. Yes, I think it cleans up when you get to the next one, but this first one we did backwards. So if you see what I'm saying.
So these are drops, but later they're going to be ads.
It should be. That's the goal is that it's, it starts with our original and compares to MASC. It goes in that order. This first one, I think we did the other way around. Yep. Do you see what I'm saying? So it crossed out guardians when it should have been adding it.
And reasonably as crossed out versus.
Yeah, okay, everything's kind of backwards to what it should have.
But because this is first read, second read will be super clean.
Yeah, yeah.
So again, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, you mentioned a district version and a regional version?
I'm sorry, I MASC and district.
Oh, okay.
Read to my mind.
Okay, sorry, sorry. That was my confusion. I understand.
So this tracks what happened here by virtue of this.
Yeah, yes, yeah. And it automates the differences for you. So you can just spot them.
It's really cool.
Yeah. So in essence, tell us again, Sharon, you're faithful to MASC with one exception?
Well, I noticed most of the language and the MASC says parent and we had parent guardian in our district version. And I suggest, I recommend that we keep that, parent guardian language.
I think it is parent. Yeah, I think they, I think it's backwards in the red.
They do too.
Um, I think I looked at it again. I think MASC used guardians.
Guardians. And parents.
And parents. They added guardians.
Do a parent slash, you know? Well, we're studying.
It's in the other ones.
Are we recording?
Yes.
Okay, to be clear. Good, thank you. So in that case, it's entirely faithful to MASC. Fine, I'd suggest you are moving this as initial approval that we do so. Do you want to do a motion at the end, a bundle, the ones that we're going to approve?
Is that more effective?
We'll get them in two piles. Yeah.
Once you get something really tricky, but others.
This goes in the move forward pile.
Can I have a, not clear. So under the safety on the playground and playing field section?
Right.
Are those instructions of students and the proper use, is that taking away or adding them?
It's an adding.
So this is a regional as well?
It's everything, yeah.
So we're not supervising and we're.
So I'll remind you in your last, you did look at this one before and you had questions about the developmental piece. So if you want to clarify that, Sharon, you talked to MASC, correct?
For this one, this is the one they recommended that we just tailor it to what our needs were.
Yeah, they said, do what you think you need to do.
Okay.
So if you want to qualify anything based on developmental stages, you could. Same was true of the supervision of students up top.
So are we just saying during the school day?
Because just generally speaking.
Oh, I would definitely say during the school.
Okay, then that's fine.
Yep.
Yeah, because I was like, it's, it's impossible.
Yeah.
Even at the elementary school.
To your point though, do we want to call that out, Lori?
It makes, does it say that elsewhere?
It does not. In their charge is the operative term.
Maybe it's implied in a lot of these things. I mean, we have to go through every policy.
Yes, I think it is.
During school hours. It's important just to say the kids cannot be released during school hours to just walk away.
Just as often we want to.
It's fine. It's good.
So we're adopting the MASC as written. That's the recommendation on this one, right? Right? Okay, the next policy is JFABE, Educational Opportunities for Military Children.
JBB, I think.
JBB, I'm sorry, I'm out of order here. Sorry.
This is a new policy, JBB. MASC added it.
Use my notes here. Good jail. Yeah, this is, so this is, we don't have a policy here. This is only a MASC policy. I didn't see anything that was had any unattentional consequences for the district. My recommendation was to adopt the MASC version in full.
I believe it is consistent with our long held philosophy. Lori's shaking her head.
Agreed.
Assent.
It's hard to believe, 100% agree with you, but it's hard to believe that this isn't already included in our policies. Like, don't.
I mean, it's certainly included in our plans and visions and all of that, but it's not called out specifically. I mean, I think it's found, it's referenced.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Equity is an emerging sort of
Yeah.
framework.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just more explicit, I think.
And it doesn't replace or supplant anything else, my knowledge.
No.
I'm with you, Sharon.
One, okay. Okay, the next policy is JFABE, Educational Opportunities for Military Children.
This red line one is correct. So you can see the red line is what MASC changed from what we had initially.
Either with a cross out or an add.
Yes.
Oh. That's helpful.
Yeah.
That is helpful. So the only thing I noticed with this one is there are certain areas where they say the school committee and MASC says the district. I wasn't sure if there's a preference towards either of those terms.
And what would be the overarching objective of this, just to make it easy for more transient activity on the part of students that didn't, didn't cause them unnecessary issues?
It's mass general law.
But yes, I know, but as a practical measure, there wouldn't be as much loss.
Bedford, this is a big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here, not as much. We've had a few.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So Lori, do you have a preference for either term, district or school committee or?
I, I think the intent was to have it feel broader than just the school committee believing it. Because if you look at that last sentence in the first paragraph, now it says the district believes it's important, which is bigger.
And as a fussy matter, when we say district singular, we mean plural because policies for one are policies for two unless we say otherwise.
Right. Okay, so my recommendation for this one was to adopt the MASC version.
Yep, sounds good, ma'am.
Yep. You have one in accordance, okay? Okay. Next policy is JFABF, Educational Opportunities for Children and Foster Care.
Was mass general law?
Yes. Over this, I didn't see any really significant changes between the district and MASC.
What it has done is further align it. It's been part of the homeless legislation edits. Fostered children have rights to just be enrolled immediately without their records and both medical and educational, which I think this clarifies a lot more cleanly. We can't hold them out waiting on that sort of thing because frankly, it can be really hard to get it. And this just, you know, they're entitled to immediate enrollment.
On the face of it, does this mean that a youngster who leaves Concord and ends up in Fall River would travel to Concord every day?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
That's the only unintended, unlikely.
It's very intentional. They want the kids to stay in school of origin, very much like the homeless population.
It had quite a cost though.
Yeah, no, and we've, we've had to incur that, you know? There's always a degree of reasonableness. That's what the best interest determination is, where both, both districts and the, and DCF get together on a call and make a decision about enrollment. So if it's too far, everyone would probably agree that the negative is bigger than the positive.
Court, I volunteered for DCF for a couple of years and it usually is only like with teenage kids.
Oh, I can, I can imagine. I'm, I'm, but compared to earlier, I'm looking at unintended consequences that I don't have to live with, but somebody does.
Yeah, no, I mean, we, it's very much like the homeless population. We own the transportation portion if they want to stay here.
What does this change for you, Lori?
Half of the other district.
On the management side, the administrative side, what does this change for you? Anything?
Complies with the law, yeah. I think it's clear what the law requires.
So is that one okay if they want to adopt the MASC version? Yep. Okay. Okay, our next policy is JFBB School Choice.
Just a quick question. If, if this is a 2021, how often does MASC recycle?
Wouldn't that be the question of the day? I went back through all of what they've put out for updates and the last flurry of updates over the last year plus has had everything back to 21, 22, and some current ones in 23. And yet they, sometimes they're republishing them even under the date that's a year old, you know, so I, my hope and maybe Tracy Novak can help us with this feedback. They're just, you know, pushing out so much so fast and it's hard to sort out what is a year or two old versus what's brand new. I literally had to sit and do a huge, you know, a couple of hours worth of crosswalk over the February break. So I could see what we had changed and what we hadn't, what they had changed and what they hadn't. And it's all coming in these individual updates that aren't organized by, Sharon will tell you, when we got together to plan the agenda, you have to have all the updates open and go find each policy. It's not in order with the date of revision on it. So I wish we'd asked them.
Or the updates were by section or something like more organized.
Yeah, it's not organized the way the updates are coming out, so.
Well, I can give that, I'm going to see Alicia next week. I can maybe ask her that and give her some feedback on that. Because if it were organized by section and date, then that would at least give you a starting point of, okay, when was the last time they looked at it? Okay.
Not the, the heavy, whatever the term is, but like they're a huge, they don't have a system, like we slowly realized we needed a system instead of doing this every year. And so
Yeah.
Like Mary can just pull up a list now and go, oh yeah, we did these all last year.
Right, and we have that too. Erin has that.
They not have that with all the policies they had.
And maybe they do and they're not sharing it.
And I will say Alicia's like area of expertise is policy. So I think she is going to be their policy person. So maybe she will.
They need a master view of it because right now, the only way to keep up with the updates is to go through every update over a certain time window. And because they're doing so many of them, like we were literally jockeying between six different updates.
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah.
And for this one, we also have a JFBB dash one. I don't know if we're going to pull that up and look at it because they're pretty much the same.
Yeah.
Just when you get to paragraphs four and five, it seems like they combined some of the paragraphs for clarity.
Yeah.
So I don't know, do we adopt both or do we go JFBB one or reference, cross-reference them? Because they're summarily the same policy.
Yeah, it was odd to me that they had both.
Are they trying?
Maybe one.
Yes.
Are they trying to do something in dash one that they're not doing and?
You tried to find it. If you can.
Four and five.
You spotted anything, let us know.
There's no legal, they cross out.
Yeah.
Right.
So without studying it, I'm going to propose that we put this one aside and, and consolidate it into one unless there's a reason not to. Why make life more complex?
Right, yeah, right.
Is that okay, Sharon?
I was, I was that, I was.
How about we table JBB and JBB one and ask ourselves between now and the next session, can we consolidate these and simplify life?
You're trying to JFBB.
The other option is.
So JFBB, I'm sorry, Carrie, JFBB dash one is MASC only policy. We don't have that. We just have JFBB.
I guess my point is if we don't know already that they're doing anything different, it's an easy thing to do is adopt both and say we followed MASC, a simpler thing to do is go offline and pull the two in together as one. I'm not.
We did compare. There really isn't a difference.
The, the other option is we could do that homework, like figure out, reach out to Alicia, maybe.
Alicia and have her.
Figure, understand why there are two and then bring it to the second, since it doesn't look like there's a.
The dash one doesn't even make sense. Like it doesn't even make sense. They don't, they don't categorize things as a dash one.
Yeah.
So I.
I just want the big difference is one says hearing and one says meeting. Oh, no. No, one doesn't have it. Oh, yeah, I don't understand.
So you could suggest going to the MASC version of JFBB and then leave a question mark next to the one and we can talk to MASC.
Get guidance from there and then if we delete it, we delete it if we.
Or even amend JFBB if it tells us something.
The difference is to admit versus.
Is it a hearing or is it a meeting?
It feels like it's an error.
Yeah.
Does ours say a hearing or meeting?
Let me write that first paragraph.
Like these, these paragraphs are different.
Public hearing will be held. The district.
Except for this, not.
Well, I think we should not just table either and get clarification on hearing versus meeting because if that's in the law, I don't want to adopt one that says meeting.
Have we done hearings for school choice?
We're doing it tonight.
Tonight. We're doing mine tonight.
I think we always have.
It's on the agenda, yeah.
So that shouldn't be ambiguous.
They purposely changed it, so.
The other one has the hearing.
Yeah, we can ask.
So I'll see clarification on that one.
It's okay to.
Yeah, I think we're helping them, letting them just straighten out there.
I mean, I didn't, I didn't make the definitions of any of these words, but I mean, like we have meetings all the time that are public meetings. Anybody can come, but that doesn't mean they can talk. A hearing, the whole point of hearing is.
Hearing that you can do back and forth, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
So the most recent recommendation, Carrie Rankin, if I heard you correctly, was could we not adopt JFBB to move forward and put JFBB dash one under review to see if?
No, I don't.
Oh, I see the difference. It's one word difference. One policy says you're going to admit non-resident students and JBB dash one, JFBB dash one says you're not going to.
Oh, so it depends on what happens with.
You could choose, depending on your vote, you would swap them. Okay, light dumb.
Once is meeting and that to me is a real.
That we can check on.
Well, we could also, well, we could also keep, I mean, do we have a problem having a hearing? We, we have, that's our.
No, that's, you need to have a hearing.
Yeah, move it to hearing.
And then you would pick one of these based on your decision tonight.
We thought both and just depending on our decision, that's the one we refer to.
Well, I think they're giving you the option.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it would be the option every year, right?
I know ours in Carlisle, like we just have one. It covers, like, right, we, we don't do school choice currently, but you don't, right, you have to check it every.
You have to check it every year.
That might change.
Right.
So we only have one. We don't have a, a yes or a no. We have a.
You could also just change one of them.
You could, yeah.
Say, yeah, dependent on vote of committee at the hearing.
Correct, and not be trying to remember to swap them if somehow you change.
De facto though, we're JFBB one.
Right, yes.
Yep, yes.
Let's, let's accept reality and adopt that one and we reaffirm it every year by, by virtue of our vote.
And then we'll confirm hearing versus meeting.
Well, I've got hearing in JFBB one.
Oh, you're right.
It's hearing.
It's, okay, so that cleans that up then. So.
To adopt JFBB.
Yeah.
So we move forward on one and we.
Call it JFBB.
Correct?
No.
No.
And you can call it JFBB because that, then you won't have a JFBB if you put the dash one on the end. I really think they're intending you to choose one of them as JFBB.
I'd like us to sync one and call it one. So because when people compare with MASC, they're going to get two, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's JFBB. I see why you say that, but I think it could be more confusing.
Not gonna.
But none of our other policies have a number next to them like that.
But none of them are a, pick A or B.
We're not.
We're not picking A or B.
We're only.
We're only doing the B.
Just table and see clarification on that.
My only point is somebody's could conceivably claim your JFBB is not consistent with MASC JFBB.
But we could say why.
Which we would say yes, it's correct, yeah.
So I think you'd adopt JFBB dash one as your JFBB.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, wow.
But do, do we want to amend it to say?
It does say hearing.
No, 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 not the hearing piece, but to add in.
Oh.
That.
Should we add a footnote?
Something about reaffirming it annually?
Uh, we have.
It says that.
Should say.
By, okay, by June one of every school year. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you're covered if you followed that whole circular conversation.
Okay, so we're going to drop JFBB dash one.
As JFBB.
JFBB.
All right.
Yep.
Look at the.
Good.
Looked at these a bunch of times and it didn't occur to me until just now.
So we'll ship those two policies. Okay, our next one is JH Student Absences and Excuses.
This is highly aligned with the law.
The MFC version, yes. Were there any parts of our version that you wanted to keep, Lori, or just?
I don't think so. I think the part I would note is MASC, because there's a lot of protocol or procedure that goes with this, they've added this note that, you know, highlights DESI's processes that we have to follow.
Lot of boldface.
Yeah. Yeah, which isn't not typically what you do in policy, but I think it's actually helpful to us that when people question things, the DESI requirements are right there.
So this then has to reach principles post haste.
We're already doing it. We're just.
True, but it's going to show up in the handbooks now.
Oh, it does. It already does, actually.
But my recommendation was to adopt the MASC version in full. I think there's a little bit more robust. Any discussion?
I'm with you.
Well, I'm on agree with that. We adopted that one in full. Most of these are just, I mean, we review these, so most of them are just minor changes. Okay, our next policy is JHD Exclusions and Exemptions From School Attendance. And what I know is here is just seemed to be some updating of the legal references. And the third paragraph is where there were some minor changes there.
Primarily, they've made it very clear kindergarten's included and it was a little fuzzy when it had the age of six.
So my recommendation is to adopt the MASC version in full.
This one's more recent.
Yes.
I imagine all of these will have 2024 at the end of.
Yes.
Very exciting. Any discussion? Our next policy is JICE Student Publications. Lori, I don't know if you have background on this one.
Yeah, I think what they've done is actually make it more realistic as to what's actually happening. You can see it used to say there's, it has said annual review from the school committee. And that's not happened anywhere that I've ever been. So I think they're trying to align it and I think a little broader in terms of positives without a big, long list of what you can't do. More along the intent of student publication rather than the disciplinary piece that sort of was starting to be referenced there.
Okay, for that one.
What does this, um, like what does it define what a student publication is?
No, in fact, that's, was a challenge when we looked at this in 2017. We had an issue on the table actually because a very young elementary student had created, created her own thing. And there were some concerns over what was in it and free speech. All that was in the mix. So it doesn't, I mean, generally we consider, practically, we consider it certainly any school sponsored pieces or publications we're asking of kids as part of a course or something like that. Because obviously we're using some varied means of expression, not just having them write papers and take tests all the time.
And it's not like you're.
School sponsored is, I think the phrase I'd put in front of it.
It's not like you include this like pursuant to state law language on a paper.
Correct. So the place that probably should be is the voice out of the, on the newspaper.
Newspaper.
Yeah.
The drop of the school sponsored reference actually opens up the gate, does it not?
It does. And, and to Carrie's point, knowing where all those publications are, especially in the days of the internet.
Right.
Is a challenge.
Is there anything in our handbook that references this as well?
The policies, the guidance generally, yeah.
So do you want to leave out the school sponsored part or?
I mean, clearly they were trying to distinguish that each student publication shall contain. I don't know how to enforce that exactly when I don't have access to all of what a student might consider a publication. So I guess that's for you to debate.
That's what I don't, right, like, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I prefer that each school sponsored because my son currently publishes stuff online that I can assure you is not appropriate for school.
Yeah.
Cause I've read it. I'm going to stop him from like, right.
Yeah.
Right, 17 and he, he's writing, so I'm happy.
But, but in your case, it's arguable whether it's, it's a school.
Well, that's, that's what she's saying.
That's what I'm saying. He's a student. He's technically a student.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, you know.
Lori, what are the implications for you if we keep school sponsored in there?
I actually like it better. I think it does contain our jurisdiction a little more. Obviously, if kids are putting up hate things, that's back in our territory again because discipline's got to.
Either way, yes.
Yeah, so.
This tells you where the boundaries are.
Does, yeah, yeah.
And school sponsored de facto means somebody in our employ. And school-sponsored de facto means somebody in our employ.
Yeah, was involved.
Game somewhere, yeah.
So I guess.
That part's pretty loose, what that means. But, but it's different than not.
It's different than just broad open each student publication.
So should we adopt the M A S C with the change?
Yeah.
School-sponsored.
Yeah, thanks for talking.
Which shows up on two occasions, if I'm correct.
The third and fourth paragraph.
Do we need to add it to there, or is that just a? That we need to annually review our support of school-sponsored student publications, not like we're annually reviewing.
But we don't, it was Lori's. We love, in an ideal world, we would champion everything, including.
I think it'd be hard to capture it all, because we do it so much as an instructional strategy now, that where's the assignment versus publication difference, because part of project-based learning is that they have audiences, right?
Oh, that's not in this one.
Are we good with that one? Okay, our next policy is J I C F A, prohibition of hazing.
I think this one, they just thought it was clear to remove the M G L reference at the beginning, and then they updated according to chapter 222, which is the principle has suspension oversight, not me. Legally.
And you're comfortable with that? Thanks, that one we want to adopt in full. Policy is J I C F A dash E.
We do not have currently.
Which is M A S C, is that something you want to adopt?
Sharon, remember when we looked at this, it's just cut in, they cut and paste the law here, which I guess if you think is effective, we could do it. You don't need it.
Are these all referenced?
Yes.
Sorry, which one did I add now?
It's just the definition.
That is funny, because I, when I was reading that, I was like, what is the actual definition, but it's, it is referenced.
It's from the law, yeah.
I, I'd advocate changing the title to reference M G L. Just because it's so unique in that way, that it's. It's, it's, it's not a policy, it's a root, a reciting of, of the law.
So what, what, what are you saying?
I'm saying for a parent to read in our, our titles, our table of contents. Hazing parentheses, mass general law.
We have a lot of policies that are really just, we were going onto the bullying one, and that mostly more than national law.
Maybe just hazing defined, that's not cut and pasted like this.
But why do we need that?
It's all on this last policy at the bottom.
Well, we don't need it. The point I was trying to make was it would be easier for a parent to understand that it was distinct from policies. But in support of, I don't care.
I feel like this book is already six billion pages.
I mean, the first one is just prohibition, and this one is really just defining it, which.
Right, right from the law.
Could we instead just?
It's a dash E, right?
E is exhibit. So it's something that supports the.
Could we just put it here, so like it's on the same page, instead of as its own link, you know what I mean?
I mean, do we do that on any other ones, though? I mean, I, I feel like if you're, if you're, if you have an issue with hazing, you're gonna be clicking on your legal reference.
In five years, you're gonna go, why did they do it this way? It's supposed to be dashy.
We're back to where we started.
I don't think it's necessary to adopt, that's my opinion.
It references the law and the main policy, and we don't have the dashy, let's just leave that.
And Tracy's right, this is one that would rise to the level of careful scrutiny.
Not adopt, we're not gonna.
Yeah, there's a lot of folks.
Yeah.
Remove it.
Remove it, we're not.
Not adding it.
So we don't have it.
We don't have the dashy.
We're adopting it.
We are gonna adopt it.
We're not all in agreement.
Because the lawyers are already involved at that point.
Isn't it not referenced at the bottom?
Yes, it is.
It is exactly that, isn't it, dashy?
Yes, yes.
Not adopted.
I mean, I don't think we're.
It's all there, who would differ?
You're not skirting anything by leaving it.
Next policy is J I C F B, which is bullying prevention.
So they've updated, really, they've made a few tweaks, the biggest one is the definition of cyberbullying, which I think they finally decided not to be so specific on, because it changes all the time. You can leave in if you want, you can see it cut, that we have CPS and C C R S D where it says school district. You can leave that in, that's really up to you.
I'm just gonna say that, yeah, the top thing says the school committee, like.
What does that M A S C say?
It says that, the M A S C says the school committee, but the whole, I, like with the last one we talked about, it's not the school committee.
Yeah, that's right, it's a good point. So you can decide which way you wanna go, and then the other things are the pronouns are gender inclusive.
M A S C is pretty deliberate when they say school committee. I'm wondering why they said it.
And we can't say school committee and the district, because they're not separate.
Was there any where here?
I mean, I like the language that says conquer public schools and the conquer, I, I, I like that language.
At the end of the day, it doesn't change anything, not the initial messaging, that, and they're passed that into what does a policy say on behalf of the alleged incident?
And then, as it goes in, it, it then starts, it's at the school district, district, not the school committee. It is the school district, like, it's not just the school committee that's, I guess.
Is, is the weight of opinion, leave, leave the first line hours?
That would be my recommendation.
I'm fine with, I don't feel strongly either way. I'm fine with whatever.
Okay, so adopt with that one change for the first sentence.
And the same question comes up with the other CPS, C C R S D references.
Rest of them, at least do then say school district. Which, that's a shortening.
So you're gonna shorten it?
Not so long.
I really object to removing fax, these kids are faxing.
Similarly.
I, I like fax, the word fax.
I thought we were on a post fax.
I'm just glad people have finally stopped trying to identify the technology. Out of date too quickly.
Healthcare is still faxing, it's very scary.
I know, it's the only reason we still have fax machines, is the nurses offices.
Okay, okay, next policy, J I C J, student use of technology in schools. That's a M A S C only policy, and I was gonna refer it to you, Dr. Hunter, for this one.
I mean, we have, if you go, you know, we have big policies on use of technology in the school, so this is just a, it's a pro forma one that sort of says, here's what we use and why we do it. All the appropriate use things are in other policies. You know, if you see here acceptable use of digital, you know, they listed the policies below that might pertain. So it's really up to you if you wanna.
We have.
Policy.
That they sign. And they do that already.
So, and we.
Like, starting in elementary school?
It's in the handbooks, so when you sign off on your parent handbook, you've technically signed off on it.
For that page.
The middle and high school kids have to sign an Aspen themselves, and the parents sign.
When they get a device.
And we have a code of conduct, capital C. I think we should adopt it. I see it related to bullying, among other things.
I think it's just one more place to kind of remind students.
This is really like opening a whole other can of worms, but like the cell phone, is, do we have a district-wide cell phone policy, or is that?
It's all under the digital technology.
And is it like the, the pockets that they, in the high school that they use?
That's a practice, not a policy. I mean, the middle school makes them, keep them in their backpacks, high school makes them put them in the.
In the pockets.
Shoe.
Elementary school.
They hopefully don't have them, but we're dressing it all the time, yeah, they have to keep them away. We've actually had to start with the watches, and the watches have to get put away, because they get distracting and.
Especially during impasse.
Wait till the computer's in the sweater.
Yeah, I don't know, what, what are we gonna do then?
See in the glasses. That's one we want to adopt. Our next policy is J J. Wait, can I just bring up one thing? Will we have to add the reference to this policy in our other policies?
As we go.
We'll definitely remember to do that.
Definitely remember to do it. Court, court will remind us. From the peanut gallery.
Yes, from the beach, yeah.
Curriculars and extracurricular activities.
Ours was pretty new.
I don't even know what that first thing that we're eliminating really means. Probably a good idea. I think there was an intent there, but I'm not quite sure of this.
It's impossible in this town anyway. Coordinating what we do with. Lots of other things can't be done.
I think the district just had, we had a few more bullets, we had two more. Which, I, I liked what ours said under. As far as those two.
Call them out, which ones?
Let's see, under ours, number four and number five.
Our yellow, four and five?
Four and five. Our four, our five is their three. Our four is their two, so I think it's paragraph. Two and three that we have.
I'm a little concerned about groups, any, all groups have a faculty advisor, groups is so fuzzy. And faculty advisor is so specific.
Isn't that in the contract?
And it's, it's one we've actually pulled recently and said, folks can't meet without an advisor there, because there were some citizens trying to meet with a student with nobody there, and we were like, oh, no, school committee policy.
Really good practice.
Yeah, we actually used this one.
Walking right into a problem.
I mean, outside groups can use school facilities after school or other things. Isn't that what we're talking about here? If test wants to be with parent volunteers, that's acceptable, not aligned with the middle school, I'm saying just an open test. Right?
So the only other observation I have, do we want to continue to use the school committee or the district?
At the top.
At the top.
What is the difference?
These are our policies.
On, on these things, I just. It's the district, like, we, for lack of a better word, we work for the.
We make policies for the district.
Like, like. I don't know, I don't like, and to me, the school committee seems very fluid, because we change all the time. And now with the district. But I feel like that's more steady than we are, so. And I don't know, I just feel like it should be, instead of five people, which I know we're not five or seven, but, I don't know, just feel more, whatever to say that the district as a whole agrees to this and.
I wonder if it, like. I don't love the word believes.
Yeah, because committees, committees.
The purpose of a policy is to be definitive, not to have like.
Like it's song philosophy, yeah. Want to change that? Should we just start it with, instead of the school committee believes, just start, let's do the activities.
That doesn't.
That's very definitive. Just cut that all out, student activities are a vital part.
It actually strengthens it.
So. My recommendation is second change version of the strikeout of that first sentence.
As long as we're wordsmithing, I'd love the word should to read are to be used. Should is pretty qualified for a sentence. They should be used. We want to be a little more declarative, they are to be used.
It's more definitive, for sure.
As long as you're into the wordsmithing.
And what did we decide on these ones that are recommended to be scratched out? Are we keeping them scratched out?
I would like to keep number two scratched out, the assistance of parents and planning activity programs will be encouraged. It seems a little bit.
Parent guardian.
Integrated.
Parent guardian. I think it doesn't make any sense.
I agree with the strikeouts.
See once again.
So we'll go with.
We're in agreement, yes.
We're in agreement. Change version of those two. With the qualifications. Strikeout of school committee believes, and we'll change should to are.
So we have the three subheadings unchanged, one, two, three.
As proposed.
Yes. Got it, okay.
Okay, our next policy is J J E, student fundraising activities.
Does this not exist?
Not very long.
So on the district ones, they print with like teeny margins.
It's all how it prints out.
I know, I know, no. It just makes these ones look longer. This is clearly.
I mean, this is obviously much tighter, J J E. Which I think probably makes good sense.
Exploited is a really loaded word, sounds so intentional. Me, it's such an active verb.
Is that one we want to see changed to?
Well. To me, I wouldn't want any kid disadvantaged. Exploited implies to me intentionality, we're trying to, trying to take advantage.
Well, I think it's a statement of what you're avoiding. Committee wishes to ensure that students are not exploited.
Oh, yeah, agreed, I know.
It's a big word.
Could you just switch it to protective?
Why wouldn't we want to be clear about what we're not gonna allow?
Is everyone okay with the adopting?
And just to be clear, it seems like some of these types of policies say principal or their designee, and this one is very specific to the superintendent.
It is, yes.
I just wanted to say again, it says school committee.
This is kind of on us, though.
We own this one, because it's, it's financial.
And because it goes right, it doesn't say the district or the principal or whatever, it's sort of like boom, boom, right? Superintendent, the school committee, kind of over being sure this.
Do you want to be the gateway for a hundred percent of this?
I'm fine with that. We could stand to tighten that all up.
Or K H A, which is sort of aligned. Says the following, fundraising, it says the superintendent and principals. So, just so, it's a little.
Yeah, it was a little fuzzy.
Okay, I'm sure it's not on purpose, so it's fine.
Our next two policies are M A S C only policies. Our next two policies are MASC only policies. Uh, the next one is KDC. Community use of digital resources. And actually for these jobs, going to defer to you, Dr. Hunter.
Sure. So this is really just documenting that you're likely allowing guests onto wifi and things like that. And that the superintendent and IT director have essentially full say, which I think we've been living.
Come on in, Chris.
And any guest can be revoked at any time. It's probably good to have that. If you ever were to have a problem, you'd have a place to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd agree. Yeah, adopt that one in full.
Um, let me just. Ask us to look at the second to last sentence, the district's digital use form. Um, is it a form or do you want a broader term?
Yeah, we probably want a broader term.
Agreement.
Agreement.
Yeah. Yeah, forms too specific.
Yep. So we'll adopt that with the change of the word form to agreement. Doing pretty good.
Doing great, Sharon.
The last one, yeah, I get it together. Our last policy, KDCV district website and social media, and that's another MASC only that we do not have.
This one I like. I mean, we need a master way to control social media and to ensure that we're aware of what's going on.
This is a recent update by MASC two, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
It's pretty. Comprehensive.
We just need to publish this though. I don't.
Yeah.
A little confused about the commenting. I guess if we have social media, which we don't, YouTube, you don't have to turn on or do you?
I did, and now I don't after, um. Something happened.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure about all of the high school accounts. Did they commenting on or off? I don't even recall. Should look. I don't know.
It's pretty useful and it takes time and work to try to be sure that all the accounts are official.
Yes.
Yeah.
Agreed.
We have handles where they're all.
Yeah.
Cause they just been dormant because somebody sails off into this.
Yes, and they can't get to it. Right, the logistics are actually what drive some of it. It's nice to have this. Whether we can perfectly manage it, it's nice to have this when you are needing backup to be like, oh, no, no. Only school sponsored accounts that.
What's it?
Ones that we're aware of, we're part of the setup of.
Soccer team, yes.
Well, but is it?
Is it a friends of?
If it's a friends of, is it school sponsored?
Yeah, those, yeah.
Well, they have to.
It's not.
Right, but they don't those, the friends of have to come seek like organizational authorization from the school committee? So wouldn't that?
Spin up account that says ERCC boy soccer or something.
Or like class of twenty twenty-six, class of twenty twenty-seven, like.
I mean, I'm. I'm talking about employees. It's going to be really hard to manage parents and kids.
We're talking coaches though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is any place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And even, uh, clubs.
Sure. And I can say, for example, like there was a, a class of twenty-sixth parent won one. The parent was like, thanks so much for hosting. I got to meet a bunch of new people. So sometimes like the commenting, commenting is helpful on the parent's side, but they're not school sponsored.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. Well, so I think it's just the commenting on the school sponsor. Just make sure we're doing that on our school sponsored accounts, I guess.
I just have one quick question on this one, Lori. Under unauthorized use of district or school name, did we want to expand upon that? I just leave that in a case by case basis. I don't know if you want to provide any examples or.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I have an example last week that I had to take the name off, so.
Oh, yes.
It's good enough. I think so.
Alright, so that one adopt.
And then in, does it say image?
It doesn't say it.
Like the use of logos or? Images?
I think we understand what that means.
I think that's inclusive there.
Yes.
Unauthorized use is unauthorized use.
Use, okay.
Especially in.
Thanks for asking that, Sharon.
Venture.
Right.
Okay, I. Going to quickly do the next steps. We have what?
Yeah, we should just quickly.
So our next steps, uh, we just want to talk about what policies we want to, uh, review for our next. Meetings, I don't know if you want to.
Which we don't have scheduled, so I think that it's twofold. It's the, what are, what's the next plan for a meeting? And what policies would we look at? I went back. Essentially, you're back at the beginning. What we did tonight means JK and L are tight. That's good news. The end of the policy book is, is, is current. That also means A on up through. J, yeah, A through I needs pretty significant work, whether because we haven't looked at the As in so long or because MASC has updated things or both.
The Ds, we are legally out of.
The Ds are among that mix for sure. Yep.
So maybe we should have a discuss it at the next policy meeting, which we review and then.
So we don't have another meeting on the books for this.
This year.
Year.
Right.
Well, and I get, I think it might be helpful to get Alicia in with us to kind of go through like, should we start with the As again? Should we start with the Ds? Should we?
He's on their list.
It's on their list.
The only ones we haven't gone over that's on their list.
Right.
And there's been legal changes and Ds, yes.
Okay.
One of the things that we've talked about, I don't know if it was like last year, I don't remember how we talked about it, but like the idea of every X years reviewing the whole book during the summer in a like really ruling two day.
A summit.
Yeah.
Policy summit or something.
Um, instead of like it feeling like it's hanging over our heads constantly. Um, and I don't, I don't have a opinion on that right now, but I do think it's something we, that should be on the table as we like talk about what's next.
One of the lucky.
Well, I know, I trust me. Whatever, whatever.
Practical matter is awful. As a, as a useful matter to reset every school committee is wonderful.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be every year, you know, but like every two years. I don't know. I don't know what the frequencing is, but I feel like something.
Yeah, I do think a different strategy would be a good idea because we're ten years since we started the review.
We've been dip sticking.
Yeah, and we've caught up with what we had too, but to your point, it sort of hangs over our heads a lot. MASC is getting really timely and updating. And now we're one or two updates behind. So I do think it needs another strategy, at least.
There, there needs to be.
There should, in the short term, we need another way to get caught up. Yeah. I mean, nothing sounds more fun than a couple of days of policy.
Amazing. But with this new red line version.
Just like getting through the, the Ds.
Yeah.
Is probably a couple of sessions if they're meeting.
Could be.
So do you want to come back to this?
Um, well, I, I really think it's for. For the next policy committee, is it for?
So my only concern is you don't have another meeting scheduled. You don't have a committee assigned.
We don't have a committee.
Going to just sit there, I think, which is fine as long as we all know that.
Maybe after we receipt the committee, maybe that could be a chance in June to kind of set us forward for next year. And, and start thinking about policy in June versus in September.
Yeah.
Maybe make a plan in June.
You just might miss the summer because I, I understand the challenges because of the timing with the reseating. We know the summer last year, you couldn't find one date, so.
Yeah.
I don't know.
When is your election in Carlisle? I forget.
May.
Yes.
I feel like it's after town meeting.
Yes, the thirteenth and elections the twenty-first.
Twenty of May.
Okay.
Yes.
So we won't receipt the region until probably June.
Or, or you've called extra meetings and done it right after.
Right after.
The first time that we would all meet would be.
You've added a meeting the last couple of years, so you don't have to wait as long.
But yeah. Alright, why don't we put it on?
Put it on the list and maybe do that.
Because.
Receded.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So maybe we can just put it on the agenda for June fourth. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think you're going to adjourn the policy because of how we have multiple agendas. You're going to adjourn one meeting and start the other.
Do I have to roll call out of that or just?
No, just adjourn.
Alright, so I adjourned the policy meeting.
Nice job, Sharon.
Thank you. Alright. Alright, so I might, I'm going to call the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee to order. I'll call the Concord School Committee to order and I am going to open up the school choice hearing. And I will turn it to. Dr. Hunter and Domingos is with us online. I just saw him in there. Hello. And just for the minutes, all members are present. Okay.
Ready to go?
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Alright, so the, uh, school choice is an annual decision by the school committees in the Commonwealth. You have a requirement every year prior to June first, um, to have a public hearing. And also to decide if you're going to then consider or not school choice. It is my recommendation again this year, as it has been, that we vote not to participate for the following reasons. Uh, the current CPS and CCHS enrollments are too close to the capacity of the buildings. And there is not equitable or adequate transportation to allow all students to be able to attend school in another district. So those are within the option sets as to why you would vote not to participate. And my recommendation is to continue to decline that option.
Okay, any discussion about Lori's recommendation? Any members of the public want to chime in on the hearing, whether online or in person? Okay, so with that. I would entertain a motion that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees vote not to participate in the school choice for the school year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. So moved. Okay, Sharon, I will just say for the minutes, Sharon Witt moved it and Carrie Rankin seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, and with that, I will close the, um, school choice hearing. And we'll move on to our student update. I know Felicity's here. Oh, there's Harry.
Hello. Unfortunately, Zaria can't make it this week. Um, but she's helped us take a look over the presentation and things like that. So just give me one minute, share my screen, sorry. Okay. Perfect. So, um, starting off, class government had its annual St. Patrick's Day luncheon. Um, and it was in person for the first time since COVID, so that was a nice change. The past couple of years I had helped out at, and it was just handing food out to the seniors in their cars. So it was really nice to have them in person in the cafeteria. I know they really enjoyed the chance to get to interact with some of the high schoolers. And we had a lot of students volunteering. You can see in the picture down there, which was great as well. Um, and spring sports have also started. We're in our second week of track, so that's been positive for everyone. I know lacrosse and tennis, I think, are starting to have some scrimmages this week.
Yes, and for the regular performing arts update, um, last Tuesday evening, we had our preview concert for MICA, which is the, I believe it's the Massachusetts instrumental choral or instrumental and choral conductors association, which is a competition that the band orchestra and choral ensembles go to. And this was actually, I think, one of the first concerts that we've had where all three of those ensembles performed together. So it was really nice for kind of the chorus kids to see what the band orchestra kids were doing and vice versa. Um, last Friday, we had another one of our Fun Fridays. Um, and there were some musical performances by student groups in the school cafeteria during lunch blocks. And in the evening, um, class government organized the annual hypnotist show, which as always was very popular. And you can see a photo in the top right of, I'm not, I wasn't there, so I'm not really sure what's going on in that photo, but it looks fun.
Yes, yeah, the hypnotist show is a lot of fun. Um, I've been going for a couple of years and I finally got to see my classmates be hypnotized this year, so that was nice. Um, and then sophomores took MCAS today. They're doing that tomorrow as well. So we've just had like a slightly modified bell schedule at the high school. Um, it's the same thing we've been doing now, so it's nothing too out of the ordinary.
Um, this Friday is also the end of quarter three, which actually surprisingly, I think at least Harry and I both mentioned that it's been like a bit more, a bit less stressful than previous quarters. It could be because we know there's only like one, like the very last stretch of the year now. And also because Harry and seniors are getting ready to leave, so.
Definitely. Uh, and then just as a final thing, Senate has started working on our events for the spring. So we'll have our usual pop-up thrift store and we're talking about having once again the spring spirit assembly that we started last year. So lots to look to coming up with that. Yeah, that's all we have for you guys this week.
Great, well, that's enough. That's a busy week and I loved hearing about the bands, especially because Mr. Nosie's with us tonight. So you've got it all right and he, he was nodding with all your initials, so it was perfect.
Hi, Mr. Nosie.
So great job as usual. Uh, we're looking forward to the spring and is the spirit assembly, is, do you know if that's outside or inside?
I think that we're going to move it inside this year. We had some problems with the outside. Um, and people are a little farther away. So yeah, I think it'll be inside.
Yeah, I feel like it was like super hot or something last year.
It was, yeah, it's a little unpredictable.
Yeah, great. Alright, well, thank you for coming. And as always, you can stay, no pressure to stay. Zaria did stay the entire time at our last meeting. It, so it's good that she gets the pass tonight. Thanks so much and we will see you at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, great, which brings us to our recognitions. And tonight we have Chris Nosie with us and Dr. Hunter is going to say a little bit. Uh, Chris, you can come join us at the table and this is a big congratulatory moment, but.
Yeah.
Give it to Dr. Hunter.
Great, so we're really excited to have Chris here tonight. Um, Chris has been recognized at a national level and wanted to be sure all of you in the community were aware of that. So I'm going to ask you to bear with me while I read and we're going to let you talk, but after I. After I embarrass you for a few minutes. Um, so Chris has been named one of the forty under forty musicians, uh, from the Yamaha group. So in twenty twenty-one, Yamaha launched the Forty Under Forty Music Education Advocacy Program to honor educators who are making a difference in growing and strengthening their music programs. Now we celebrate the twenty twenty-four group who bring innovation and passion into their classrooms. These forty educators, all under the age of forty, showcase the following characteristics. Action, anticipating what needs to be done and proactively taking the necessary steps that lead to a stronger music program. Courage, proposing and implementing newer bold ideas. Creativity, showing innovation and imagination and achieving plans and objectives. And growth, establish, grow or improving music education in their schools and communities. Each year, hundreds of nominations from students, parents, teachers and administrators, local instrument dealers and mentors are received. The forty under forty educators have elevated music and music making in extraordinary ways. Let's talk a little bit about Chris. Why he's been honored. Um, no cowards may be a strange message to share with students, but Director of Bands and Orchestras Christopher Nosie uses that phrase for students to know that they can safely and confidently make mistakes during rehearsals. The biggest difference between a new student at Concord Carlisle High School and one who has been in the ensembles for a couple of years is in how they handle making mistakes, Nosie says. Our established members would quickly acknowledge their mistakes in rehearsal, often with a quick glance toward me and we can continue our rehearsal knowing that we're all on the same page. He goes on to explain that no cowards is a tongue in cheek way to remind students to own the inevitability of an error. It's also important for me that we are also always pushing ourselves out of our comfort zones, whether it's singing in rehearsals, performing, challenging repertoire, hollering for soloists in the jazz ensemble, or cheering on the football team at home games. We take what we do very seriously, but we try not to take ourselves too seriously. Nosie brings in conductors who extend his students' understanding and perspectives beyond what he can bring to the table. I keep an eye out at festivals and conferences for folks who may enrich our learning. I'm very cognizant of my limited perspective and inherent bias, and I work to bring in as many varied perspectives as possible. Some core values that Chris emphasizes in his class and throughout the program include candor. Students know that he will be honest with them and expects the same from them. Community and belonging, everyone is welcome and he means it. Concord Carlisle sponsors multiple events throughout the year. Some musicians can just be together and enjoy each other's company. Living composers and new repertoire. He participates in consortiums and commissions to introduce students and audiences to new composers and repertoire nearly every concert cycle. We perform a lot of repertoire by living composers and one of the greatest advantages of this is that we don't need a, how do you say it?
Ouija board?
Thank you. Communicate with them and the students love hearing about the work firsthand. Musicianship outside our ensembles. Many of Chris's students perform in outside bands, orchestras, chamber ensembles, hardcore bands, and as singer-songwriters. All these pursuits are valued equally for the role they play in enriching the music. and as singer-songwriters. All these pursuits are valued equally for the role they play in enriching the musical community within Concord Carlisle ensembles. Prior to joining CC, Nosie co-taught at the elementary and middle school level for nearly a decade. They built a robust program that was more than just a feeder for the high school. We wanted something that students could be proud of right there and then. We set high standards, brought in clinicians, participated in concert festivals, and even commissioned new works. Biggest investment was in the culture and community within and around our program, and it has paid dividends at the high school level. Now Chris is reconnecting with those students who he remembers teaching how to put together their instruments. Those fourth graders are now these incredible, passionate, driven, smart, funny, and hard-working musicians, filling the seats of my high school ensembles. Just another note, you know, this morning I was with the administrators, and we were talking on best instructional practices, and then we moved over to DEIB, and your name came up in both conversations as a model of DEIB and the diverse music you're bringing into the program, and as a model of differentiation and really our accommodation plan, which is how do you reach all students? And it was so great to hear the administrators bring up an arts example while we were really talking about classroom instruction in the whole. So kudos, because you're doing so many amazing things at so many levels with a lot of kids all at once often, and just really, really just reaching kids at levels that we're really proud of. So thank you. We're really excited. You've been recognized for all the great work you're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I'll turn it back to the committee. Well, I like to say I remember when, Chris, but I mean, my kids have taken band from Chris since they were in fourth grade, and then they all dropped out, which is totally fine. They weren't practicing. It was not his fault at all, but really, I mean, I have, I have watched him transition from the elementary teacher, middle teacher, and now to the high school, and the community that he has in the band. I spent a lot of time at football games in particular, and the pep band is unbelievable. I mean, they are, these kids are so psyched to be at that game, and they are participating, they are part of the school, they bring so much spirit to the sidelines that really, I mean, I thank you for that, and giving kids just a place that they can express themselves musically, but also just who they are, and they're very comfortable in your program, so really, this, this, but no one deserves it more than you. I'm glad that you were recognized, and we're all very proud of you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
I'd like to add, Chris, in addition to the accolades that are so well-earned that have been referenced by Dr. Hunter, you've also found time and energy for the Concord and NINI affiliation that we're so proud of in Concord. And you've been a long supporter of the instrumental music school, the after-school program, so thank you for keeping those two links very strong.
A pleasure.
What do you like the most about the high school?
Yeah, it's, I think it's, it's, this year's gonna be tough when these seniors graduate, because last year was hard as it was. But I mean, like I said in that, that, that write-up, you know, the, the seniors, even the, the kids from Carlisle, you know, Kevin and I would do so much when we were at the middle school level in collaboration. So seeing, you know, kids that I've known since they were nine years old, like literally don't know how to put their instrument together, like it said, and watch them, you know, in rehearsal and perform. I was at our state conference this past weekend. Ben Luchkowski, who's a senior at CC, just phenomenal musician and incredible person, but watching him sit in the trumpet section, the principal trumpet player, you know, highest score in state, and watching him coach the rest of the section and talk to the trombone player behind her about the intonation is one section in a really diplomatic way, which, you know, I don't know if nine-year-old Ben could have handled. Seeing that growth and, you know, things come full circle has been really rewarding. And we can play a fun rap, too.
Well, even when you went to the Kicks for Cancer game that was actually away, that was probably, I think it was actually the best game that we had, and for an away game, it felt like it was a home game, and it felt like it was our game. You know, everyone, the football team is wearing pink, cheer is wearing pink, the band is wearing pink, and that was the first time the sweatshirts came out, and really just to, to make it feel like the whole school was really involved in it. It was really special, so.
Yeah, it was, that was a fun one. It was really, it was cool to, you know, I mean, kudos to, to Aaron for helping us get the transportation, and it was, it was a lot of fun. It definitely did feel like a home game. It was nice to play really loud from the visitors, which isn't something that typically happens now, transportation budgets and things like that, so we're really fortunate as well to be able to do it.
I just want to say, too, you know, we talk so much at this table about academics. We talk about curriculum and math and science and English, and but yet we have this big part of our strategic plan called like Alternative Paths to Success. And to me, the way what you've brought to the music program, and like Tracy, my kids do band for a little, and then they're gone. But irrespective of that, what you provide is such an augmentation to the academic curriculum, and it gives kids who might not thrive in a math classroom a place to thrive and succeed, and that is so important, and I have always thought about our extracurricular program here as being so incredibly instrumental to why kids here feel like they belong, have success, find a, find a path past high school. And it isn't just their SAT scores and their GPA. It is all of those things that make them who they are, and without people like you to champion that, that, that's, that doesn't become an option for our kids, and, and kids really do like talk about you. You're, you, you, you make it feel special, and, and that is a big, big achievement, and why you're recognized. So thank you so much for doing that for our kids.
I mean, Chris really takes the leadership part of the role, so Chris has added me in. We, he took one of the PD paths I offered a couple of times, two years in a row on leadership, and then invited me to come in and talk with the band, because he was trying to make sure the modeling, just like he just talked about Ben and the mentorship he was doing, like he's trying to really intentionally build skills in kids beyond the music. So I was invited one early morning to go talk about what it's like to run the school district and really engage conversation with young people.
That's cool.
You know, the, the behind-the-screen version of like, hey, what, what really happened in COVID? That sort of thing. So just kudos. You're doing it at so many levels. It's just really impressive.
Thank you.
So can I, what else happens with the award? Is there any other big perks or frills, or a lot of, a lot of positive?
No, I, I mean, I'm 39, so it's cool to be recognized. I was joking. It's really nice to be recognized as being under 40.
Yeah, it might be the part I'm most jealous of.
I only have a few months left. I had to like, you know, certify that I was going to be under 40, which was tough to do. But no, I don't think there's any, I'm, I'm writing an article for Yamaha's Music Ed. You know, their, their resource center, stuff like that. I don't, I don't know. I don't think I have anything else. I think that's about it. But yeah, it's, it's, to look through the list of people, it's, it's pretty great. The, the person that was recognized right above me taught at the school that I had taught in, in Austin, Texas for a couple of years.
Wow.
Pretty wild.
Yeah.
But yeah, I don't use anything much beyond them. Hey, congratulations.
A big tripper prize.
No.
A lot of great, great positive messages.
Another night meeting. Exactly. We had a band parent several years ago. I was just off to the side hearing the conversation between her and her son. I think he just had a solo, and we were saying, we gotta get even more solos at the next concert, and she's, you know, the reward for hard work is more hard work. So it's, I think it's great.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Chris. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. So go back to those informances with the T-shirts.
Yeah.
In the cafeteria, in the informants. It's great. All right. So moving on, we are at the public comment section of our meeting, so we will start with public comment in the room and then go online. If you have a public comment, you can fill out a blue form and bring it up to the table. And our public comment period is a period of 20 minutes, and you will have three minutes. So up first, we have Kristen Higerty.
Good evening, everyone. I have three or so different things, so thanks in advance for following along. First, I read Kristen's announcement that she's leaving at the end of this year, and I'm sure there'll be time to thank her later, but I really do appreciate what I have heard in these meetings when, you know, your math department has come and kind of presented about everything they're doing to bring in more active learning and learner-centered instruction, so thank you for that. The, I know you're gonna be talking about the Student Opportunity Act, which I believe that you started in 2020, and my question for that is, I would like to know how and how often the data will be shared with the community, particularly because you're talking about these, you know, targeted groups, targeted student groups. And then my third point is about the Metco representatives. Their seats are expiring this year, and I certainly want to thank them, and I'm sure before they roll off, we will be able to do that. But I know that two years ago, when you, you know, formalized the policy, you talked about a couple of things. There was a suggestion from one of the school committee members about evaluating or examining the first two years of the representation on the committee so that lessons learned can be applied to the new term. That's really important in terms of making sure, at the time, you said, making sure that it was impacting the families and students in the way that it was intended to do. I'm, I'm certainly glad to have representation and hear their points of view. It, it is a little bit concerning, as was pointed out, that without a vote, even impassioned and informed and representative comments might not carry the weight that it would, it would help. So I do want to make sure that you guys, well, I hope that you review that May 10th, 2022 meeting when your policy was first discussed to talk about how you can, you know, how the policy is working and helping everybody. And then kind of regarding that as well, two years ago, you talked about a stipend for the Metco member representatives, and I know there's issues about school committee members can't be compensated without a town committee, a town meeting vote. But I believe there was talk about Metco Inc. maybe kicking in or something. But I think two years later, I think it's time, as you're trying to encourage other people to apply, you've got lessons learned to review and kind of upholding the commitments that you discussed two years ago, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and let's look online. If you have a public comment, you can use the raise hand feature. And I do not see any, anyone else in the room? Okay. Great. And then we have our consent agenda, and so does anyone need to pull anything off of our consent agenda, or are we good to vote?
I'll ask that we pull off item D, the minutes of February 6th, please. And I can either discuss it tonight with the committee or write up for you suggested edit.
Yeah. Also for the next page.
Thank you very much.
Well, why don't, why, why don't we just deal with the consent agenda first? So we'll pull off the two 6:24 minutes. Anyone else have anything else to pull off?
Those please.
Nope. Okay, yeah, we're not quite there yet. Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D.
So moved.
And do we have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, so with the minutes of February 6th, do you have additions or changes?
I haven't written them up for you. I have two concerns. One is that I believe the remarks of our colleague Domingos Rosa were not representative of what in fact he said. He presented for a considerable length of time. I think it's been abbreviated, perhaps more than I'd be happy with. I can't speak for him. Secondly, there is considerable reference in the beginning under public comments to the CMS name, quote unquote, or the or quote the existing CMS name. But in fact, public comments happened before this school committee did any naming. So there wasn't a name. So I'd like that those references cleaned up.
So do you have specific, like in terms of Domingos's comments, do you have something specific that you'd like to add?
No, but I'd like to ask my colleagues here and ask Domingos if indeed this was fully representative. I don't believe it was, but I certainly wouldn't insist on it.
I'm wondering, I'm sorry to interject.
Yeah, go ahead.
It seems like stuff with the minutes has come up quite a bit. I know Tracy sent an email from the MASC sort of advising about the minutes, and I think you just passed out some minutes. I know that's next on our agenda. And I'm wondering if it might make sense to table these minutes, not to jump ahead, but even the first item on our discussion, which is the January 23rd minutes, and which again, I just think I'm looking at those quickly and looking, there's a lot of edits there, and wondering if it might make sense to have add to, add to a upcoming agenda, a session with the MASC to sort of get us all on the same page about the role of the minutes, the role of the minutes vis a vis like our video, you know, we, it's not like we don't provide access for people to understand and watch every detail. So I'm wondering if that might, especially as we're preparing to reseat the committee, if that might make sense, just to add a quick workshop with the MASC to sort of ensure that everyone is on the same page about the role of the minutes, our role and, and that kind of thing, because I think that there's just, I'm not sure that, I'm not even sure, I guess it's kind of selfish even. I'm not sure I understand exactly how much editing and how much specificity is required for minutes or, and that kind of thing. So my preference would be to table these two minutes. We're very good about getting our minutes out quickly. Other boards and committees are not, so I don't think there's any harm, and, and again, access to these meetings are already online. So I'm wondering if there might be some consensus about thinking whether that's a good idea.
These minutes are not online as approved minutes, so.
No, I'm saying our videos. So anybody that wants to know what happened in that meeting has full, and I think easier, better, more interesting, nuanced access. I'm just saying, other committees don't sometimes put out their minutes forever, so I don't think there's any harm in delaying these as approved minutes, because I think what's more important maybe is to get some guidance about how we should be approaching the minutes sort of in general. I think that could be a good course of action, because there's been just so much editing recently.
Yes, just for point of reference, I have a little bit of a different, and I know it's not on our agenda, so we can't get into this very deeply. But I appreciate your recommendation, but these are things that are wrong. They're factually incorrect for the most part, and in my opinion, there's big omissions where Dr. Hunter gave us her progress on her goals, which I think is one of the most important things we do. We should at least summarize all the things she said in that conversation.
Are, are these the, are these the January 23rd? Okay.
Yes.
So I, I wasn't gonna try to make a transcript of the meeting or anything, but we didn't, there was a list of names from middle school. They were incomplete. I think that's a big omission.
Okay, yeah. So, so I think what we should do, I think the February 6 minutes have been pulled off. So if there are suggestions for minutes, we have to do that in public. So if you could at the next meeting court bring your suggestions for addition as you did the last meeting. Cynthia's brought her, so we'll move on from February 26th, February 6th, and not add that, and I will just remind you, the email that I sent, and just for the public. The MASC says minutes should not be forensic or transcript of the meeting. Any amendments to draft minutes must be presented in public during the meeting. And then the requirements of minutes, just as a reminder, are what records of public meetings must be kept. Public bodies are required to create and maintain accurate minutes of all meetings, including exec sessions. The minutes must be created and approved in a timely manner. They must include the date, time, and place of the meeting, the members present, the decisions made, and actions taken during the record of all votes, a summary of the discussion on each subject, list of all documents and exhibits, and the name of any member who participated in the meeting remotely. So that's the requirement of minutes, and so I think what we should do now is go through Cynthia's changes, but keep in mind, that is the guidance on minutes. It is, and we have to talk about each one if it's a change that you have, okay?
Okay.
All right, so let's move on to the January 26 minutes. January 23rd, sorry.
Right. So the first change is just a full list.
Wait, I'm going to interrupt you for one second because I forgot correspondence.
Oh.
So sorry. So in the correspondence section of the meeting, I had three pieces at the region. Um, now I've lost my train of thought as to what they are. Oh, one was someone looking for a job, which we do not do. Um, and then we had some feedback on a webinar that was held online and I think there might have just been two.
I bail you out a lot. Did we have any?
We did not have any CPS correspondence.
Okay, I don't, I didn't think so either. Okay.
No, it was, it was a light week in correspondence. So now, without further ado, we will move on to the minutes of January 23rd.
We had CPS correspondence, no.
Do we have? So I said, did I, did we? I said, sometimes I bail her out on the region. I just don't remember. And my Gmail's not up.
Oh, about the MTA.
Yeah, that was the, that, those came into the region.
Sort of regional. Oh, okay. Yeah, they were.
They came into the region. Okay.
Okay.
Just on the webinar.
Gotcha.
Um, okay, and I will move on to the minutes of January 23rd. So Cynthia.
So the first change is in the, uh, announcement from the chair on the names of the middle school. I might have a typo in there and I will, I will fix that. The spelling of school. I fixed it in electronic version. But I just took it from your list that you presented that night.
Okay, and do you have the electronic version of this also?
I do.
Yeah, if you just, you can just email it after the meeting. So the first change is the addition of all of the names.
Yes.
As a committee, is everyone okay with that?
Sure.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
This is all.
Add those.
I haven't like verified that that's correct, but assuming that's correct.
That's the problem with this process.
But this is the only way we have to do it.
I know, but I think MASC is thinking it's going to be changing it from Jane to Joan or something like that, you know.
No, Alicia was very clear. She said every change has to be done publicly.
So there was no list, was that originally? I forget.
You made a list, you presented the list. You read everyone.
But they weren't, the list wasn't included in the.
It wasn't incomplete.
Oh, it was incomplete. It was only partially.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It stopped for some reason.
And so this is, uh, an effort to, uh, fill it out.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Um, so I think one of the cleanups, uh, is going to be Doris Kern's Goodwin, perhaps.
I trust the, the, I don't.
You'll go through it.
We approve the first change.
Yep.
Great.
And you'll see these redrafted. You will see the redraft for our next meeting.
Very good. I like that.
Okay.
Oh, perfect. Okay. I didn't realize that was, I would, yeah.
I think we need to do that because there are multiple changes.
Okay. And then the next one is, uh, number B in public, uh, I'm sorry. We jumped into discussion of, okay, it's down on, I don't know why it's B, but it's speed. And you said there was another reduction in 27, 229.
So just for clarity, your additions are underlined and in the other font, correct, what I'm looking at. Great.
Yep, that's what, it should be read by the color printer.
Needed some glasses on this.
I know.
Yeah, thanks for the font. Awesome. Thanks. Okay. That's fine.
And then the next one is page three, uh, CCHS. It was nutrition break is only for early release. Just to think that we don't provide nutrition breaks every day because they have lunch, right? And then page four is graciously awarded. It just said the district, regional district. Sometimes we get confused between which district we're in.
Awarded to the, can you just say what it says? Because I can't literally.
Regional district.
To the regional district, instead of the districts, the regional district. Okay.
And then in page five at the bottom, I just added the additional things that Dr. Hunter presented to us as part of her what she was doing, working toward her goals. And I just summarized them. So it's deeper learning initiative at CMS and CCHS, de cap. Um, new schedule at the region. I can send you all these student wellbeing highlighted in the rollout, responsive classroom at CPS and then DEIB.
Okay.
Along with the other things in there. And then we just need to put a roll call vote in to go an exec session. I know we didn't have a recording, but I'm sure we did a roll call vote at the very end.
Execs, uh, did you add that in there?
At the bottom.
At the bottom.
Yep.
I'm going to ask for help without a recording. I don't, we don't know who moved and.
I know, but we, I just said moved in second.
All right.
We, I know we did do a roll call, but I don't, I can't remember who.
Anyone recall on January 23rd?
Imagine how you could remember.
We could just say at the bottom.
I wouldn't have said I because I wouldn't have been going in there.
Okay, well, that's good.
What did you, what would you have said?
Nothing.
Nothing.
She doesn't participate.
No, no, no. So I will.
Either would have said, no, I don't, I don't know what I said.
I will remove that. Sam was just trying to. I did listen to the whole recording, but as we know, it wasn't there.
And maybe I did say I.
No, no, no.
So why don't?
I'll clean that up. I'll send it to you.
Were there other changes that you had?
I did.
It's, you removed the other changes.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted to get the, yeah.
The, the substance down. Right. Okay, this makes sense. All right. For these, what we will do is we will make these changes.
I'll send them to you.
And then um, can, can Erin make, you send, you email me the digital.
The word document.
Well, for the.
Please email, you know, email it to me.
Yeah, email it to Lori. Yeah.
Okay.
Great. All right. So we are not going to vote on those tonight. We're going to see the updated version and be done. All right, moving on to the regional budget and we all have a memo from, I'm just going to pull mine up from Bob and Lori on an update on the Concord Carlisle Regional Budget. So you have received those and I will note that I believe we have Carlisle FinCom and members from Concord FinCom online. Yep, yeah, go ahead. Turn to Bob and Lori.
So the, the, the memo's posted, uh, it's linked on our agenda. And I'm just going to walk people through it.
That'd be great.
I don't know if we want to project it on screen, um, but, um.
That would be helpful. You have folks in the room that might want to benefit from it.
To. Yeah. In the meeting, just going to project in a second.
And I will say that this was actually really helpful to see all laid out here like this. Um, just to give us an idea as to where we are in the regional budget. We've had some questions in the past, like week or so about that.
Patients and.
Play some music if I had some.
I know.
Entertain everyone. I don't, we should ask Chris Nosie for some music in the background. And if you haven't heard the high school band, it's really amazing. So I suggest you get to a concert.
So, um,
There we go.
You know, we've been asked to, to look at our budget, um, and presented it. So we've been doing that and, um, gone through kind of an extensive process and wanted to share where we were. And we also thought it was important to share kind of, um, just the, the timeline of, of what we've done, um, partly as a reminder, partly also for us just to lay it out so that folks, um, on the town governing boards and also I think the school committee, this might not be news, but thought it was important to share here anyways. Um, so our initial but, uh, pass at our budget, uh, through our zero-based projects, the super superintendent's recommended budget was presented on December 5th. Uh, we came in at a 3.37% increase over the FY24 adopted budget. We had, um, some additional work that we did. Uh, we didn't necessarily get feedback that that was going to be, we were aware that it was above guideline. Uh, the guideline, uh, focuses on the operating budget exclusive of debt. Um, we are, you know, if you, if you factor in debt, we were below the guideline, but with, if you, um, don't factor in debt, which is how the guideline process works, we're above the guideline. We're aware of that. So we did some additional work, um, worked with the, um, administrators and the principals at the high school and identified 110,394 all staffing related cuts, um, that we presented previously. They're in the area of math. Um, that was a point seven five FTE. Um, and it resulted in our budget coming in at 3.08% increase over the FY24 budget um, at 38 million 974 907. Um, these were done, you know, we presented them to school committee. I think approved at subsequent meeting on January 23rd. Um, I just wanted to note that these were cuts were identified early in the budget process and town boards and committees, um, particularly the Carlisle Committee might not be aware that the cuts had already been made. We have had, um, feedback from Carlisle that, uh, some groups, um, had been asked to make cuts. So I just did want to be clear and highlight that we did make 110,000, uh, in cuts, um, early in our process, um, after our initial budget presentation. Um, since then, we have been, uh, we, so we developed our budget in December before revenues are issued by the state. Uh, the state guidance came out in late January and their projections for revenues were 83, 80, approximately 84,000 below what we incorporated into our budget. Um, the state budget process goes through multiple steps. There's the governor's budget, then they have, it goes through the House and the Senate, and then they have a committee, a conference committee between the House and Senate. So there are other steps that happen in the budget process. There could be changes. I wouldn't anticipate significant changes. I'd also say there is some, you know, revenue environment isn't necessarily great at the state level. Um, so we can hope that there may be some projections. It wouldn't be unprecedented, um, but we don't expect they'll be significant. Um, and we don't also think it's prudent to rely on them or plan for those to happen. So what that means, um, you know, legally, we, um, as a public entity, regional school districts, um, we can't overspend our budget. Uh, we would need to make up a revenue shortfall by reducing our spending uh, unless we had other revenues materialize that we hadn't planned. Um, there's a possibility that could happen. But again, that's not, I would say prudent planning to, to hope for revenue to materialize. Um, so based on where we in our, where we are now, we'd anticipate that we will be required to identify spending cuts to the FY25 budget to offset the revenue shortfall. Um, those could, um, be identified, um, later this spring into the summer. They could be identified next year. The bottom line is that by the end of FY25, we can't overspend, um, expenses in relation to the revenues we're taking in. So that spending cut of 84,000 would, would balance our budget. Um, and I did, you know, want to clarify too, that, you know, cutting 84,000 in expenses would, would balance our budget. It wouldn't change the assessments to Concord or to Carlisle. If we took that 84,000 and applied it towards assessments, we'd have to come up with another 84,000 to balance our budget. Uh, so it'd be kind of in a cycle there. Um, so it's critical that the cuts we first identify, um, are applied to balance the budget and not to reduce assessments. Try to scroll down here.
Bob, before you go on, does anyone on the committee have any questions regarding that? This I found to be the most complicated factor. I read and reread. Analyze any other questions on that before he goes on.
You were referring to the assessments?
Uh, no, the 84,000, the cut, um, with, with the funding and then the cut.
So it's basically a cherry sheet, uh, determination here.
Yep. The, the cherry sheet is the state revenue guidance, um, that that's issued based on the governor's budget. You know, I've been in districts where I see some tweaks, uh, you know, in a hugely favorable economic situation, you might see a bump up. But typically you might see a minor increase to something or a minor decrease. Um, I, I don't, you know, so.
And no change in the ask because this wasn't, uh, money we were seeking from the two towns in any event.
Right. It didn't feel like that was, uh, you know, we've been asked to look at ways to reduce our assessment. So, um, I, I don't, you know, that wasn't something we thought was a possibility.
Thank you.
Is this something that?
Microphone, sorry.
Is this something that's unique to us or is this something that most communities are?
Um.
Were they, are they underfunding most of our neighboring communities?
Hmm.
I would say some districts, um, have factors affecting their budget as well. I mean, when you see the other districts increases, you'll see, um, some of them might have been more conservative in, um, their, their revenue assumptions. I don't think we were overly aggressive, to be honest. Um, but, um, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into it. Um, and it's a pretty complicated formula. So I would say a lot of districts, the majority of districts are not seeing a lot of increased funding from the Student Opportunity Act. Um, and they're so we're not, we're not unique.
You know, that in partnership with high inflation, high special education costs. And we were careful with the S R money, but that drying up, like that's why you're seeing districts hit, hit fiscal cliff is used more than I would care to use it, but that's what's happening. And the overrides are, are much more common this time around. And you know, I think we've done a good job of mitigating all of that. Um, but we're also nervous to continue to take risks, not knowing what else is coming. And you know how much risk there is already with special ed and some of the other things. And um, in a zero-based budget, we don't, we don't budget for one extra out of districts. So we have to go right to circuit breaker. So, and you're going to hear in a minute, we're about to tap E and D for the insurance overrun. So yeah, so it's, you, you just don't want to get too far into your reserves to stay afloat.
So, uh, if there's no more questions on that part, I'll, I'll move on. Um, so we were asked, I think there was a question, um, so I incorporated into the memo. It's might have been from Carlisle. How much E and D are we using? So we're, we've incorporated into our budget, uh, $300,000 of E and D as a, uh, revenue source in our budget annually. Um, this is applied to reduce assessments of our two member towns. Uh, it would be similar to the towns using free cash to fund their operating budget. We're, we're very close to the cap. Um, this has been over, this has been going on for, I'd say a few years, and we've reduced it from 600 to 300, I think, two or three years ago. Um, the, this 300,000 is approximately 17% of our most, most recently certified E and D balance, which you'll see reported later tonight. And you know, at some point we need to look at look at reducing that in the future, but I just wanted to highlight where we are now in that. Additionally, uh, again, this will be presented later night. We plan to utilize 395,000 more in E and D funds to cover the CCRSD share of exit costs from Minuteman to Shobah Health Group as the district transitions to Maya for health insurance. Uh, this will cover one-time costs for runoff claims. Um, runoff claims are expenses that get billed after we've exited, um, so from July 2024 on, but that relate to healthcare expenses prior to to July 1st. So, you know, in Concord, the town of Concord is going through a similar issue. Um, they're a member of MNHG, I think with the larger liability, and they're looking into fund this as well. We felt like it was important to, um, you know, this is a one-time expense. It's, uh, not something that made sense to build into the budget and have as a inflated baseline in the budget. So this is the cost we need to incur and we felt like the best way to, to fund it. Um, so when we look at this overall, you know, one of the questions that could be asked is could we use more in E and D to fund our budget? I thought it was important to highlight this represents about 39% of our E and D and stated a different way. It's about 1.8% of our operating budget. Uh, we can, the cap of E and D is 5% of our operating budget. Um, so you know, this will consume a significant portion of it. It'll still leave us above 3%. Um, about 3%. And, um, again, so this is, um, where we are. Based on this, I, I don't recommend that we reduce our budget. I think that Dr. Hunter and I will need to focus on identifying 84,000. Um, and I think, you know, we're at a point where that's difficult and challenging. Um, we don't need to solve it immediately, but that it is something that's important that we solve, um, and identify fairly soon. We're working on it. we solve and identify fairly soon. We're working on it. Don't have that tonight to share, but, you know, from an assessment perspective, and the towns approving our budgets, we wanted to share that, you know, if we do identify some cuts, they're not going to result in, shouldn't, we don't recommend that they result in reduced assessments, that we apply those cuts to reduce our revenue budget. So we're, we're in balance. I would add to, so I've shared the assessments, what they were at our last presentation here. I've also attached a table, because I think it is helpful context. There was a survey that went out during the week that I, comes out in the business officer listserv on where districts were regarding their budgets. And so I've shared that with the school committee here as a reference. We plan to share this memo with the town governing boards as well. You can see where we stand. And then you can, if you scroll to the bottom, you can look through, there's a lot of districts in a much different position than we are. And so, you know, I certainly understand and respect the guidelines that are issued. We feel like we're doing our best to balance that in a pretty challenging time. The average of this, this group that was surveyed is 5.1%. One of the increases went as high as 12.96%. So I think, I mean, I, speaking personally, feel pretty good about delivering a responsible budget amidst a lot of challenges, and feel that what we're presenting is what we should move forward with.
So you brought concerns to us before the FinCom hearing about athletic expenses, and then I didn't hear anything about it after that. Are we no longer concerned about athletic expenditures?
That's something we're planning to look at. I think that's something that is on our radar to look at going forward.
Yep. We're actually working with Aaron and bringing the co-principals in and doing a master view of all of it. So we're in an analysis phase. We know we had a little bit of a surprise with rink time, but we don't have the full big picture yet. So we need to, we're doing that homework actively right now.
I am concerned about equity in terms of people paying in their dues, and then their budgets are much lower, some of the other team budgets. I think they're becoming more diverse in terms of the, in terms of the money spent on a particular team versus another team. And I just don't know if that's, I'd just like to take a look at it to see, you know, how we're doing team by team. Because adding teams shouldn't necessarily add. I mean, the expenses should cover the team is what I'm saying. You know, that if they pay in 10 kids, 350 should cover the coaches. But maybe that's not true. Maybe I'm saying something.
We're in a big review process right now. We actually have a meeting tomorrow at the high school with them to get going on this. I suspect it's going to, there's a lot of variables here and moving pieces. So it'll take us a little bit to get the complete picture.
Good.
This has been very helpful. What's still in play in terms of timetable and unknowns? Is retirement still a potential unknown? Or is that window closing?
We never know. So we could get retirements right on through the summer. Teachers have choices of what they tell us and when. We've had some at the high school, so we've been able to apply that and compensate for that up to date. But we don't know if there's more coming.
And we budgeted in advance, expecting a couple of those?
Yeah, because I know that's one of the first places you look for where there might be some fluidity.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the, just to name it again, we're, we're assuming we're going to get, have a few in both budgets, and then we sit here and cross our fingers that we do. So at the high school, that's actualized. It's a pretty close at the K8. But it's a waiting game when you do it that way. So, so is there more savings to come? We would need more people that we haven't, you know, don't have to put into those gaps we created to actually benefit further. So.
And that would be our preference to have that be the source of identifying 84,000 in cuts rather than going and saying, we're not going to do something.
You have no corresponding concerns at the K8 level, as I understand it?
We're a guideline and comfortable there.
But in terms of revenue?
Well, the town manages the revenue on that side. So that could certainly be a discussion they're watching and having concerns over. Anyone else?
A clarifier.
Yeah. No, I appreciate all the work you've done on this. And, you know, this is something that Alex and I have talked about for months now, just looking at other districts around us and what their budgets are coming in at. In just our small group of nine schools, four of them are currently seeking overrides. So, you know, looking at the numbers of all of these other districts, I do think that we have a responsible budget. And, you know, I continue to support this budget.
Just a reminder, the, the high school budget incorporates health benefits, workers' comp, OPEB, all sorts of things that CPS doesn't. And normally, the guideline reflects the difference between the two. I don't think I have had a guideline where they're both equal without the high school having had some factoring in of the fact that only 60% is salaries versus 80 or 85 at CPS, because of those unpredictable things that are almost fixed costs that we can't control. So it's unusual to have level guidelines across the two budgets and not have had that discussion. Plus, you've got enrollment shift to Concord of 55,000. So I don't want to lose track of some of the things that are different. I appreciate that.
Okay. I did share this memo with the chairs of Carlisle and Concord FinCom and the Chair of Concord Select Board. So if we want to send to the full committee, we could also do that, or send it to Carrie, maybe to distribute amongst the committees.
To each town administrator.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
I'll let you do that.
Just to make sure everyone has it.
It's distributed, sure.
I mean, it is out there and publicly available, but just to make sure everyone has it.
True.
All right. Thank you. All right. Onto the amenities building. So this will hopefully be our final discussion this year of the amenities building. We last week at our last meeting decided that we have two options. One is to fund the design and feasibility study from capital stabilization at the region. And the other one was to continue to go to town meeting. Lori's recommendation is to fund it for more capital stabilization, and Anthony Unsaldi is in agreement with that. So that is, would be my recommendation moving forward to this committee. Great. Any thoughts?
I'm in support of that. And I would add, I'd like to have the school committee see the RFP on that. Because I think RFPs define what we think we want by, by way of research and opinion from expert sources that we hire for that purpose.
Do we typically see?
Have you ever seen an RFP?
Not enough, in my estimation, no. So I'd like to see this one. I think it's too important.
When, when would you?
So you need to, assuming you go this way, then Bob's going to have to talk you through the votes needed to get the money in the right place. And then you can start working on an RFP for design and.
Right.
We'll time out it moving forward. So it is not the last time you're going to.
It's not the last time we're talking.
Probably be on every agenda for the rest of the school year.
All right. Okay. All right, we'll move on.
We're going to take a vote when we vote.
Yes, we vote.
To formally withdraw.
To formally withdraw the motion.
Yep.
Any other?
The warrant, yes.
I was repeating what Cynthia said, and I should have said warrant. Thank you. All right. School committee representatives for the building service worker negotiations. We have negotiations at CPS and CCHS for our building service workers. And I would be looking for anyone that's interested in negotiations to do any one of these. Cynthia has interest. Anyone from, anyone else have interest?
Do we need a Carlisle member to do the?
Um.
I mean, I guess we don't have to.
No, we don't have to. When, when do you foresee these starting?
I don't know that we'd start right away. We just wanted to start getting organized, especially given the load right now with the CTA and CCTA. Probably early May.
Early May. Okay. So Cynthia has some interest. Carrie, you are not officially, should I say?
Yeah. Oh, no, it's known.
Okay.
I'm not.
Okay, sorry. I don't, I don't want to speak for you.
I'm not running again.
Okay. So it would be in May before we receipt the committee. So Sharon could be an option. Court, you are not an option. No, Court is not running.
Will it be over the summer? Like, what?
No.
Start in May? Are you planning on ending by the end of the school year?
We are.
I mean, I, I, I would rather not. I.
Okay.
CHTA is, is a lot of hours, but I'm, if there's no ability, I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
And I, yeah.
Tito.
Tito. Okay.
Do we have to decide?
You don't have to decide now. I think if we, I just have a level.
This is how it goes. So I put it on early.
Now we know the level of interest, so we will.
I mean, they are lighter lifts than, they're smaller units, shorter contracts.
Okay.
Not quite the same as the.
Oh, no.
At all. So.
So ideally.
Very important.
Yes. I think that, I think, and we can take one on each.
I mean, I prefer two, because otherwise if you have no backup or something.
Okay, so two on each. So just food for thought.
I'll, I'll agree to do one.
You'll agree to do one. Cynthia will agree to do one.
Two more people and we have at least.
I guess I can.
I did both last year.
Oh, true.
Last time.
Okay.
All right. Well, let's, let's.
Okay.
I'll put it in.
Tentative. Sharon's a tentative. Carrie's yes.
Nice, Sharon.
Yes. Probably. Okay. All right. So, so more to come on that. And we'll just assign away.
Okay.
All right, great. Travel. So we have a first approval, initial approval on travel. We have four international trips and two domestic trips. I believe that is attached to your agenda. Lori, would you like to speak to any of them?
I'm just going to talk at a high level. We tried really hard to be as thorough as we could be this far ahead. So having worked directly with the teachers that are looking to host trips, you know, they're highly aware of some of the things that I know you're always concerned about, cost and cancellations and safety and all of that. All of that has played into travel over the last few years. It's a really thoughtful group. There was even discussion of how to re-energize the Sharon Young Scholarship Fund. There's willingness to be part of that. So I think they're well versed. And I think you can also see, especially as we get a couple of trips that are closer to home, the range of cost is, is a little more diverse than I think it's been in the past. And that's reflective of them hearing the messages of, let's be sure this is accessible to all kids. You can see, we debated the timing a lot of the trips. We tend to not like them to miss school, but if they're traveling really far, it can be hard. So, and it turns out there's so much more to it. We talked, we ended up thinking we made decisions, and then one of them would be like, oh, the weather at that point is not a good idea. So we would change our minds. So you'll see, there's two in February, one in April. Hawaii and the White Mountains would be targeted for Q5, which is coming back at, in June of 2025.
Five, or is it after Q5?
It's during Q5 and beyond.
Okay.
Especially for the Hawaii trip.
Hawaii, yeah.
So Q5 is the last four days of school next year that we're going to start fleshing out soon, back to our, you know, revamp high school completely, where teachers lead different activities and kids sign up, sort of like a four-day flex box, if I can equate it to what people know now. So two of those trips would run during Q5. Chris put in the Indianapolis trip in case the application they put in is accepted. That's a conditional trip. They have to actually be accepted to that national event. We're here just for first approval, which means we're, you know, you're blessing to keep planning and working out details. It also means we start to put it out to kids because we need to see what enrollments are. We have had trips not run on occasion, even over the last couple of years, or we consolidate trips, or they go find another school that's going and partner up with them. So until we get enrollments, we're a little bit jammed up. So we need you to approve that. And I think the really great momentum that's building, we're already talking 25, 26, like, we're looking forward. We're getting a real rhythm here. We're going to be able to put out a four-year view. This is the goal. We're going to put a four-year view out to the students and families. So if you're going on one trip in your whole high school career, you know what the entire options that is.
The menu is.
And can, I think that also helps with planning the fiscal things. And I really, the COVID gears are finally shaking off of us, and we're getting ourselves regrouped. So this is for next school year, 24, 25, and we're here looking for initial approval. And then I usually bring them back in September or October. Often, the advisors will come and can answer more of your questions on itineraries and things like that. This is really a planning blessing that you're giving us tonight.
And will they put them on the website eventually, like in the fall? So.
They'll do that now, once you say yes.
Okay.
Because to get enrollments, we want to be sure the kids can see everything.
So I think that's a helpful tool.
Right away.
They're going to get going soon here, if you bless this tonight. These look great to me. They're diverse, they're interesting, relevant.
Is not international.
I was just going to say.
No, no, you're right. It was in the.
Out of state.
You're right.
True.
Put in the wrong category.
Sure.
Sorry. And I said.
It was really a big trip category, not internationally far away.
Really funny.
Funny.
But other, the, oh, sorry, God.
I was just going to say, you know, I see two trips, 4,000 and over. That's a lot of money. And the cheapest international trip, I think, is 2,200. Concerns about Cuba, safety-wise? It's.
I talked at length with that advisor, having just had to pull the trip to Ecuador. We talked significantly about Cuba, and she feels very strongly Cuba is the best option.
Right. But I mean, NPR today, things are going downhill. They're very, very.
We're keeping an eye on it.
Have to keep an eye on it, because it's.
Of course.
It's just, you know, there's no.
Yep.
Energy. There's no gasoline. There, it just seems like it's a little, getting more and more serious situation there. So we'll have to watch it.
We'll have to watch it. Yeah.
And just Hawaii, having done that trip six, seven, eight times, it's a tough plane ride. So is the minimum seven days is like, because you are, it's, it's, it's a long, as I said, we got to California, and I said, is it another hour? Am I the first time? He's like, no, no, two movies.
Yeah. It is. I mean, we just talked to kids who come, came back from New Zealand.
Yeah.
You're right. The plane rides are not to be ignored.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lori, can you speak a little bit to the, the French trip, given the fact that it's going to be six days away from school? I'm certainly in favor of a lengthy trip. I'm just curious what the implications are back here at the high school for students of those teachers who don't have the good fortune to go to France.
This is the exchange. So it's typically two weeks, and then we have kids come here for two weeks. So we always work with the kids and the teachers to make up the work and prioritize what they're going to make up. I think kids know so far ahead that they're able to work out what that is and make that doable. Again, the New Zealand kids just did it. They missed a week of school. It's a two-week window to go to that distance. So.
Generally, our educators are in support of working.
Very much so. And they prioritize what they need to make up. They don't make up every single.
Not with hitting that, I'm assuming six days out of school would be about the, the limit that we'd try to.
Yeah, no, a week-ish is all we would do.
One weekend to two.
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Good. Thank you. And thanks to the teachers for.
Yeah, really passionate group.
And the question is, I know we, this comes up at every, every time we talk about trips, but is there any update on the Sharon Young?
So I put an all call out, I need help, is the bottom line. I put an all call out for parent or community help. The teachers are willing to participate, but can't take the load of being the point people.
PTGs about seeing?
We haven't. I, we could see if they can help recruit. I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're like.
They need a committee. Yeah. 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 It needs a.
A leader.
Spoke. Yeah. So.
Okay. And even to put it out there in the bridge somehow to the greater community that people might want to actually donate to the fund and.
These, I mean, just looking at these itineraries, they're exceptional, even at.
Yes, they are.
They're exceptional. Like, and to Cynthia's point, they're expensive.
Yeah. And to have kids go with their teachers is, is really unbelievable.
And also, like, we have, we heard a little bit last week, I think, about the New Zealand trip and just how much of a bonding experience it was for the kids at different grades. You know, I just think it's something that everyone should be able to access for sure if they want to.
And I feel like there's a button on that, on the trip website to donate to the Sharon Young Fund. So anyone that's out there listening, I do think that there is a button.
Check.
I think I just came across that. No, there was not a button then. I think the button might.
I'll check. I'm not sure.
Yeah. So, you know, maybe there are just some ways to do that. And I think that the thought on that particular fund was to do, literally, it was the last meeting at the high school before COVID, and the thought was to do a big, grand scale event, and then COVID shut everything down. So. scale event, and then COVID shut everything down, so it just needs a little bit of life
Fination.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. All right, great. Um, so we will vote on that at the end, and then last up on the regional agenda before action items is to do the E and D certification. And I will ask Bob to present on that.
Uh, E and D was certified um, on March 15th, 2024. It's certified by the Division of Local Services, which is part of the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. They go through a review process to look at a lot of data that we provide them in kind of a pre um, established format. The amount that was certified as of June 30th, 2023 is 1,776, 766, which represents 4.7% of the FY 2024 budget. That's slightly short of the cap. There's a statutory cap of 5% uh, that you can carry for E and D, so we're slightly below that. It's different than free cash, which doesn't have a, a cap that I know of. So, again, in pretty good shape and um, we are um, certified for 2023. You'll see later that we have to re-approve the budget, and that is because um, once E and D is certified, you need to technically, we put in our budget, but it's not authorized to be used until it's approved, so it's a technical step that we need to do. That might seem silly, but we do need to revoke the budget.
All right, any questions?
No.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that. And we'll go on to our action items. So I think we, one, two, three, four, five votes here. Uh, four are attached to the agenda with motion language. This first vote does not have any motion language, so I would entertain a motion to withdraw the Concord Carlisle Regional School District article regarding the amenities building. So moved.
We know what number it is.
Should put article number, I should know this offline, but I
I don't.
I will find it.
Twenty-something.
It's in the twenties. It definitely is. Uh, hold on.
Don't wanna miss it, guess.
Don't wanna guess. And it is article 21, so I would entertain a motion to withdraw article 21 from the Concord Town warrant for 2024.
So moved.
Any Cynthia, second. Any further discussion? Thank you all for that, and uh, we look forward to Bob talking to us about how we're going to we will vote it. I'm still discussing with Bob, because he is going to be presenting again the amenities building and how we can make transfers to actually fund the study and get into the RFP process. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Right, and next up, we have a vote to approve the regional FY 25 budget following E and D certification, and that you should have motion language on if somebody would like to read that.
I move to approve the Concord Carlisle Regional District proposed FY 25 budget in the amounts presented above.
Move a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone to post? Moving.
Public, since we're not presenting, that's, this is the same budget that we previously approved, so anybody who's watching, um, this is the same budget that's previously approved.
And as your memo nicely says, this is a quote, "revote due to the E and D certification." It's de facto within our vote just now.
Yeah, we do it fairly regularly because of the timing of our budgets and the timing of the certificate.
All right, thank you for that clarity. Next vote is to approve the transfer from E and D to cover the Minuteman Nishoba Health Group exit costs.
So I
Yeah.
I had presented this uh, in some level of detail previously. Here, it just outlines, I did want to clarify too, that the vote is, you know, the motion is to approve using E and D to increase the FY 24 budget. That's technical, that's kind of the accounting way it's handled. Does it increase to the budget? We're not asking anybody for more money. We're using E and D to fund this, but technically it is increased to the budget.
Budget.
I've also included some process information for the towns at the request of one of the town administrators. They were comfortable, this is a, a responsible way for us to pay for it, um, but process-wise, they have certain steps they can go through if they have any concerns.
Okay.
Does the motion need to include the use of E and D funds?
Yeah, I was gonna add from E and D to the motion.
Yeah, okay.
So what
And then do you have to read that, that whole bottom part, or just the top sentence?
No.
Uh, yeah, those comments after the space were not intended to be part of the motion.
So would an appropriate motion be, I move to vote to approve the use of 395,888 dollars from E and D to increase the FY 24 Concord Carlisle Regional School District budget to cover the cost to exit the Minuteman Nishoba Health Group?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, um, it's a pretty precise number. Are we in fact confident this is the, the runout, or is there still more runout time that gives us unknowns?
This is what came directly from the carriers that we had to fund. It's not anticipated there would be any changes. Um, if there, I, I don't know if there even can be. If there were, it wouldn't be until six months into FY 25. I would also add that there's a fund balance in Minuteman Nishoba Health Group that is not being touched um, as part of this, and that um, you know, if we were to run into an issue in six months into next year, that, that fund balance, it's not nothing. It's not a huge reserve, but it is something that could potentially protect the member units as well, and we might see that come back in a refund like we did with Edco.
That's what I was waiting to hear. Okay, good, thank you.
All right, great. Um, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, okay. And then next up, we have a memo that's in your packet from Kristin Anderson on the Student Opportunity Act. Um, and there is language within the memo, so Kristen, would you like to say anything, or?
I can just say that uh, this is monies that we've already received as part of chapter 70, and it's just our how we're using the money.
Right.
It's done deal and a report we have to send in to them.
Great, all right. And I'm just looking for motion language, which we don't have motion language.
I move to approve the Student Opportunity Act as written.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and last, not least, is a vote uh, to approve the first approval of the CCHS travel for 24, 25.
Move to approve initial approval as presented this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Who, wait, who did the second? Sorry. Alexa, sorry, just for the minutes, gotta get it right. Alexa Anderson, second. Any further discussion? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and with that, um, I will adjourn the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee, so thank you to our Carlisle members.
So, we are thrilled to um, discuss tonight um, in some detail, the proposed plan for the Thoreau campus. As everybody knows, um, this has been um, on the horizon for a while, so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Hunter to introduce the team, who's been working on it.
Happy to.
Yeah.
So Tyler King is here from CHA Consulting, and before we turn it over to him, just a little reminder of context, and he's gonna talk on the process that we've used since the RFP was awarded to them as a group, so that it was inclusive and a lot of input was gathered and feedback heard. Uh, but prior to that, just a reminder that we had funds allocated at town meeting in 2023. Um, we've put out a proposal for campus improvements and a design of that, knowing we had needs both for just site management, erosion types of things, plus the fires impact and the extended parking we had added on the gravel, and what kind of options did we have or not have there? Concerns over more access, additional accessible playground. We had done a phase one, you'll remember a couple of years ago. Um, and then just the condition of the field and, and all of it. So it's been a really iterative, iterative process. I want to just really thank CHA Consulting has taken the feedback loop very seriously and committed to really our recommendation and need for this to be a plan that has a lot of communication to it and a lot of adjustments as time has gone on. Um, just a reminder of funding, because I know that's where we're gonna get to in a few minutes. We have the donation from the estate of 200,000, so that's applicable. Um, most likely to the playground portion, because that's what we had said we would use it from. Um, this year, the 2024 town meeting in your CPS capital plan has another 200,000 um, suggested. And then I think, you know, Bob and I have sort of talked offline a little, there's other, you're gonna see, the number's bigger than 400,000, so I'll cut to that, Chase. I think there's CPC as an option. Justin Sparks is online here tonight, and we've been looking at community build playgrounds and very inspired by the Carlisle um, work over there to, to lower costs potentially, as well as the other fundraising efforts, so I'm not gonna say for sure we don't need to come in a capital plan for the remaining, uh, but I don't know that it's definite that we do. So we'll spend the next while trying to sort out what those options are and make sure if there does need to be an ask, which hopefully there wouldn't be, it would be as low as possible. So I'm gonna turn it over to Tyler. He's um, happy to be here. He's gonna talk us through process and the design and then cost, and I think this can be a conversation uh, so that it's iterative along the way. And um, we're just really appreciative that you're willing to be here and be here in person, because we do a lot on Zoom, but you've been in Concord a few times, which has been great, and at Thoreau, obviously, a number of times as well.
Yeah, uh, thanks for having me. Um, I'll just share my screen.
Could you grab a mic, Tyler, and just be intentional about that?
Thank you.
Get it?
Does that work?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, great.
It's mostly for the Zoom audience at home, so you won't notice a difference in the room.
Okay.
At home, it makes a big difference.
Okay, perfect.
And Mr. Sparks is on Zoom, so we just remember he's here to be part of the conversation. Great, Tyler.
Tyler, can we get your, your full name, your last name?
Uh, yes, Tyler King, K I N G.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, as Dr. Hunter mentioned, um, well, first of all, thanks for having me, and excited to be a part of the team, but my name's Nick King, I work for CHA Consulting, and we um, were selected through an RFP process back around October of last year to work with the school on um, a site assessment of the existing grounds and potential improvements to um, that could be done to the site. So we made multiple site visits out um, to Thoreau Elementary to just assess the conditions of um, the grounds, the play equipment, landscape vegetation, and just how the school operates generally. From a circulation perspective, drop-off, pickup, um, how the traffic flows, and um, just try to get a feel for what every day at Thoreau Elementary is like. In addition to that, uh, we also worked with the school in preparing a survey that went out to the stakeholders, um, the interested stakeholders. They went to parents, students, teachers, and uh, the neighbors around the school. Uh, it is a neighborhood school, so uh, tucked in a, a nice community. Uh, from there, we provided feedback, um, which we presented on um, January 17th to neighbors and um, teachers and whoever else attended um, via the Zoom platform. We did hold it in person as well. So this next plan uh, is what we presented back in January. Let me just blow this up. So based on our assessment and the feedback, we focus on a couple key items, and that was parking circulation in the, in the playgrounds. This plan, we proposed, showed a parent-teacher drop-off on Chase Road. Sorry, just parent drop-off on Chase Road. Um, and the idea behind that was that intersection on Prairie Street and West Street becomes um, slightly congested during drop-off and pickup with students um, using the crosswalks. There's a crossing guard there. You have parents pulling in, um, dropping off, and then backing out to exit the site. And then you have teachers also pulling in for um, just some daily parking to um, teach the children, so. The idea behind this was to separate the two operations, um, to limit the traffic at that intersection. Uh, the feedback that we heard on that was um, this is going to force more traffic down Shirley and Chase Road, um, which was not um, a favorable option based on the January feedback that we received. Uh, and we also heard that the, the enlargement of the parking lot that we're showing here, uh, may be a bit bigger than required, and we may be able to get some of that space back to the students with playground area and just green space for them to um, play with on a daily basis. So from there, and I know there's a lot more shown on this plan than uh, I just covered, but I'll cover that in the next slide. Um, so we took all that feedback and um, we prepared the plan you'll see on your screen here. So this is our revised recommendation. We deleted the drop-off area on Chase Road and incorporated that into the onsite parking lot area. That's currently there. Uh, this will allow for parents to pull into the site, get a safe distance away from that intersection where they can then queue within the site, um, make their drop-off, and then loop out and exit um, the parking lot. This scenario does remove the existing gravel lot that's there today that we understand was a temporary um, scenario due to the, the fire in the, in the west wing there. And we did add uh, two rows of parking to just facilitate the, the teachers' needs. There's 97 staff members um, at this site and a, a little less parking than that within the site, so uh, we did want to be cognizant of that, increase the parking or make it more formalized, um, rather than gravel. Uh, just increase the pavement area um, and incorporate the parent drop-off there.
Tyler, can I ask a question? Um, that parent drop-off, that's not bus drop-off, right? That's just a separate parent drop-off, okay.
Yep, the bus drop-off will remain the same
Okay.
In this scenario.
Yep.
So just, just working the way, our way from that parking lot, we'll go counterclockwise or clockwise around the site, rather. So as we pulled in that parking lot, we, we did delete a row of parking, and there was a um, two-way travel lane further south where that rain garden is currently showing. Um, in the previous proposal that we made in, in January, by doing so, we're able to increase the playground space there, shown in blue. The idea here is to relocate the playground up along Chase Road and bring it closer to the existing playground. By removing the old one and relocating it, we'll be able to update the play structures. And we'll create uh, more of an accessible path from the internal parking lot to the playground, uh, where we do have two ADA parking spaces um, at that southwest corner of the parking lot. From there and surrounding the, the playground and globally throughout the site, just an enhancement of vegetation um, is proposed, supplementing loman seed as needed, um, just to really establish growth um, with grass and plants, uh, try to limit some of the erosion um, that may be taking place currently. And then centralized within the rear of the site, um, we would propose to resurface some of those um, hard surfaces. There is um, that asphalt court area, courtyard-type area which has some, some cracks and some, some sediment um, migration from the up, up gradient slopes. So we'd propose to resurface that as well as the uh, basketball court, which has some cracks in it as well. And then um, traveling west up the site, I mentioned, we would propose to remove that existing playground, uh, relocating it to um, south of the internal parking lot, and then um, just enhance the, the turf area up in that location where um, where kids would be able to play soccer or frisbee, um, have more of a, a field. where kids would be able to play soccer or frisbee, have more of a field-type area in that, on that upper slope. And then this last slide is the cost breakdown that we prepared. I can blow that up here in a second. But we did color code it, knowing that the budget is coming from various locations and timing is also varying. So we broke it up into phases to just allow for that flexibility, try to prioritize some things upfront, and this is all temporary or tentative, but just our initial gut shot at it. So in phase one is these green areas, and that would include cleaning up some of that hardscape that I mentioned within the central rear of the site. In that phase, we would also propose to remove the existing gravel lot that is currently out there or a portion of, just to facilitate the phase-two activity, which would be installing that new playground area and in the supplemental green area surrounding it. And then the third phase, we would move to the west end of the site to take out the existing playground, prepare that new field, and and enhance the vegetation and the green space in that half of the site. Within phase four would be the final touches of the parking lot, resurfacing the existing portion of it in the northern end, and then creating that parent drop and the additional parking spaces there. So that really concludes the presentation. I can zoom in on this estimate for those who can't.
That's great.
See you.
Court.
Do you anticipate any coverage?
You speak in your mic.
Do you anticipate any coverage structures in addition to what we have now for outdoor use, instructional use, or just rain cover or lightning protection, anything like that?
We haven't factored any outside of the playground structure. In the cost, at least, there is space for it if cost allows.
Did that come up at all in the community meetings or the educator meetings?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, not specifically. I think the other needs are so prevalent that it didn't. There is a covered pavilion type of space there that is used for outdoor.
West side.
Yeah, right outside that back door of the 94, whatever wing we're calling it these days.
Would that remain, that covered?
Yeah, that would remain, so.
We have any imperious surface considerations for which we'd need any variances, or are we in good shape there?
No variances that we're aware of at this time. It would be an additional 15,000 square feet or so. It would be associated drainage structures, and we have some rain gardens, and we would try to use low-impact development features as we're able to, from more of a sustainable standpoint.
And you talked about vegetation on the perimeter. Would you have to deal with any invasives? What's it look like there now? Where you overlook the river?
That was slightly out of the purview, I guess. There is a community garden up there on the hills that we're here referring to.
That area, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't notice any overgrowing into the site. We did propose relocating that community garden, which I hadn't touched on, but we are showing that here as number 11, just to give it into some more sunlight, maybe downsize it for ease of maintenance. It's kind of tucked away and hidden under the trees back there, so that may help with the general cleanup of that.
Okay.
Edge of the property.
Finally, for me, with the help of that tiny cursor, can you talk a little bit more about parent drop-off? And what kind of volume you anticipate? Is a counterclockwise around that new little green, is that what's anticipated?
Yeah, so if you can see this cursor here.
Those are the buses.
Yep, so the parents would enter in as they do today, and then would make their way down to this circle. They'd enter on the right-hand side, and they would make their way out on the right-hand side. So as we show here, there's seven cars able to stack. You may be able to stack some more out towards the loading area. But at current, there's six drop-off spaces here, and with with parents pulling in and then having to back up right in the main entrance of the site, it gets a little.
So this would be a live drop-off. You're not going to park your car there. You're going to open.
Open the door.
There's going to be staff right there. The kids are going to get out.
Willard has that, and it is, having been a parent at both schools, it is life-changing.
Willard's the best setup.
Yeah, sure.
Even the high school. It is superb.
Yeah, it is.
Dedicated land.
To that, I mean, to me, the drop-off is by far the strongest thing I reacted to in this plan. I mean, and this is again a site that needs a lot of rehabilitation. And despite that, again, having been a parent at Thoreau, my strongest reaction was seeing that circle, and I think that is a really spectacular achievement. I have a question. I don't know to who. Have parents, Carrie, anyone could ask, have parents been apprised of this plan? I know that they had tremendous amount of input, and I know, but have they seen it yet?
Do you mind not, can Justin pop on there if you'll drop your screen share for a minute? Parents were invited to the forum that we held in January, and I know Mr. Sparks just put it out in your newsletter. Do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, we just, we were able to share some of the presentations, some of the graphics that Tyler just shared, both with the neighbors, as well as the staff at a recent faculty meeting, and sent it out in a newsletter, I believe, last week to all of our families. And I just have to say thank you to Dr. Hunter and Bob Conry and the committee for the support and allocation of resources here that have allowed us to partner with CHA. Tyler's done a fantastic job. And hopefully, this will bring some much-needed improvements and enhancements to Thoreau campus. Alexa, you had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting about kids finding a way to belong and feel connected to their school experience, and you know, through play and through socialization out at recess, you know, kids are allowed to do that. They have that sense of belonging, so I think this is going to go a long way. And these well-designed play spaces, really, they're going to foster student development, physical activity, and overall well-being. So it led us to a strong emphasis on incorporating innovative play spaces, and I think this is going to enhance the experience for all of our kids.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Good day, can go.
So Thoreau is the most embedded school in the community physically of any of our schools. I mean, it's surrounded by homes, talked through neighbors. Has the community had another chance to provide feedback on this plan?
So, Mr. Sparks, do you want to let us know what happened after the forum and the revisions?
Yeah, so it was after we presented the first round, it was clear some elements needed reconsideration, namely the west side. So I sent that out to, with the help of a few of our residents who are sort of embedded in different community groups. So we shared that out pretty broadly, and the feedback we got was overwhelmingly positive. I think I have probably a dozen or so emails from the neighbors just thanking us for listening to the feedback and for making the adjustments. Families as well, I think the strong focus on inclusive and accessible play spaces was well received by families and staff and students alike.
Okay, I have a question about traffic flow. I've only been to Thoreau after school, so Pleasant Street and West Street, are those the two streets parents would come in for drop-off? And where do the buses come in? Do they come down? Okay. Let me just.
The other side.
The other side. The other side, okay.
Yeah, the buses swing wide.
So they go out that way, and then cars would come in Pleasant Street that way?
Yeah.
Yeah, left to right on Prairie Street.
Okay. I think I was way after.
Precisely, I should say, we partnered with Safe Roots to School, too. With Safe Roots to School, and they've just done a, they completed an arrival and a dismissal audit, and so whatever feedback they have for us will will allow us to, it might be a timing issue. It'll definitely be a staff, you know, assignment, a duty issue. But whatever feedback they have will accompany what Tyler and CHA has done for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just like the island, too, like you can have students getting out of the door.
Yeah.
School side, they're not crossing any traffic. So, I mean, there might be times where you have a carload of three, and you know, but generally, they're not going to have to cross traffic.
Yeah, yeah.
That drop-off.
Drop-offs are real game changers in schools, as some of us drop off every morning, and we're quite skilled at the drop-off.
On most days, we have probably, I would say, on average, 70-plus, probably more kids arriving, not via bus, and that is walkers, bikers, parent drop-off, skateboarding, rollerblading, you name it. And they're coming from all different directions, so it poses some pretty substantial safety issues. And I think having that designated drop-off space will really go a long way in ensuring student safety.
Agreed.
I think people are like, right now, there's no drop-off space, so there's a couple parking spots.
How you doing?
Are parking all throughout the neighborhood and walking.
Walking.
Walking their kids, or just dropping their kids where they're parking and letting their kids, I mean, it is right now a disaster, yeah.
I wasn't going to say disaster, but yes. It's organized and troyous.
But it's not, it's not an ideal setup.
Really, it's people coming from everywhere.
Yeah.
And then you add that element of staff also arriving at that same time.
Yeah. And is there a?
Better than it needs to be.
Yeah. Is there a timeline? Like, you said you could phase this, but is there a timeline for how long the entire project would?
No, funding's going to drive that.
Yes.
Funding's going to drive that, so I think we're going to hold tight. Well, Justin and Bob and I are doing research on the community build options and already have engaged with one. We got to work state bid lists and all that stuff. So we're trying to do that homework now. I'd like to get to town meeting and formally know where that stands, and then I think we could decide what phase we could work with, with good to see these.
Both of those buckets in place.
Right. Then you'd have 400,000 to work with, which I think is a good starting point while we figure out the next funding sources.
The way you've laid this out, you could fund purple. And like, so is that with the intention of the color coding to say?
Yeah.
If we have 400,000, we can fund purple and blue and.
Yeah. I was like, I don't have that much money. What do you do? So, yes.
And the green is the priority from the top down to the, you know, that would be the phasing or?
Yeah, that was our recommended phasing. You can pick and choose and.
Yeah, it's a first. I mean, not to interrupt you, but I think with CPC as an option, you've got to remember what their eligibility criteria are, so we're going to have to do some.
Yeah.
But knowing we've got the phases chunked is really.
Yes, very excellent.
And based on conversations about the community build, how much, do you have an idea of how much that would save, like even just like a percentage or?
I don't think we're sure yet. I mean, I did one a long, long time ago, and we saved a lot of money. We've met with, Justin went to Carlisle and talked with Jim. I've worked through Sharon and communicated with Brian, who ran that. You know, it's, it could be a quarter of the project, because labor is a huge part of the cost, but we're not ready to be sure yet.
It must have been a labor force of 200 people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's a great experience for everyone. It's a great experience.
And actually, in Carlisle, there were so many of the high school kids who were doing it for communities, you know, part of their community service requirement, and there were teams of kids that went to help do that. And I guess I have one more question for Justin is, you know, obviously, if you're building a playground, the children need a place base to be at. So are you kind of thinking about that, like, as this process unfolds? Where can they play while one part is being used or?
Yeah, that, good question. The intent would be, I think, to maintain what we have, the upper and lower playground and all of the grass space, the green space, while the newer playground's being constructed, and then it would be a demolition of the upper.
Right.
Yeah.
I remember from a million years ago, and maybe it's gone, that there was some fund that the PTG had had that.
Yeah.
Or use.
You tapped that to build the playground that went in two years ago, so we finally used that money.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
And just like in terms of fundraising, I know that Alcott, they did back in 2005 in the olden days, they did the Jump-a-thon, and so they had a jump roping event, so the kids felt like they were part of the playground, and they raised some money that way.
Options, so. There is like a lot of them.
Mr. Sparks is ready to go once I give him the.
We had some ideas. We just, you know, wanted to get your blessing and your feedback, but I was able to reach out to, Lori mentioned, Jim over in Carlisle, it was a $1.3 million bill. It's just amazing. I think the company, the vendor they used charged 30 to 40-ish. So what you see there is mostly equipment, because it was a community build. And I connected with a woman named Deepa who managed the whole show and talked to me a little bit about the fundraising efforts. So we're excited to potentially get a playground committee together and get started.
Right. Thank you.
One more, if I might. You've got a single line item in here for lighting, which looks very, very modest. What's the plan for exterior lighting?
As it's shown, we have six sightlights within the proposed parking lot, so that doesn't include any other.
Okay, strictly parking lot. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, anyone else with the final thoughts on this?
Oh, yeah, sure. As long as we're working a parking lot, what about charging? Vehicle charging? Now's the time to talk about it, not as an add-on.
Yeah, we'd probably have to look at, I assume it's doable, and there are grants out there, so as we go through this process, we could certainly talk more.
Need to unwind a part of.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Good point.
There's state grants for all schools. And they're encouraging all schools to do it.
Right in in the beginning, right now.
Great. Great point.
Awesome.
All right.
Well, thank you for the, I was at the January meeting. There was a lot of thoughts and opinions on the initial design, and you guys have done a really nice job listening to a lot of that and incorporating that feedback into what will be a good, seems like a good setup for the kids and the community.
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate the feedback. It's always helpful.
Yeah.
And they'd be a part of, you know, if we need design for any of this work, they'd be partner that kind of helps us monitor, like if we have to do the parts of this and spec what the design is, we'd still be able to partner with them through this, through the RFQ that we've done, so we're looking forward to seeing this through to completion with some help.
And to that point, I'm sure Bob and Lori have seen your portfolio. What would you tell this school committee was one of your marquee schools?
We've done a few. The River School probably was a big one. We've done a lot of work with them over the years, just odds and end projects. We've done fields, we've done dormitories. So they're a big one of ours, big, good client.
Got it. All right, thank you.
We appreciate how well-versed you were in schools. We weren't having to explain a lot. You knew how schools operate and were able to then apply it to Thoreau, which was just fantastic.
I'd also like to thank Kelly Colleen, who works for Tyler, who's not here, and there's another person on your team.
And Nick Schwartz is our landscape architect. They were both.
And Russ and Tim, who helped out early on through the site review and helped them get familiar with the campus.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah, it's been really fun, actually.
So maybe we turn to next steps through the chairs. What do we anticipate?
You know, town meeting is your next step, really, in terms of the community support for the next 200,000.
That will determine how you would prioritize or that.
And then we'll come back to you with updates on, once that, if that passes, what our proposed first steps would be.
Great.
Right. Yeah. So thank you. It's been really exciting and very forward feeling, and nice to feel like, you know, a campus that really needs attention is going to get it and benefit everybody. And a special thanks, and I know some of them are here, the community engagement on this, whether it was the staff or the kids or the teachers or the neighborhood. I mean, I don't think you see that level of engagement in other places, and it just really, I think, built a, you know, really nice set of feedback that we could line up and meet everybody's needs.
Yeah, we should never take that for granted here.
No.
Hey, you know, no.
It's great.
Lucky.
Yeah, so thanks. Thanks to everyone. Yeah. So thanks. Thanks to everyone.
All right. Well, with that, thank you to everyone on the committee and we will adjourn.